Time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of November 15th, 2022 is called to order. I ask those in our chamber up this evening if you have not signed in, if you would do so before you leave and also everyone please put their phone on vibrate. We'll call a member, Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markrath.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster and Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in our council chambers, those that are joining by Zoom. Remember our city council meetings are on Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also our city council meetings are viewed on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. Just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Monday, November 21st at 7:00 PM in the Government Services Building in Burgess Falls, Otterdale County Public Hearing Regarding the Sale of HTHC Products. Also on Thursday, November 24th, it's Thanksgiving Day, City Hall offices are closed. Friday, November 25th and Saturday, November 26th is Old Fashioned Christmas here in Pelican Rapids and you can check the press for all the different events. One of the main events, of course, is the Horse Parade, which is 6:30 PM on Friday evening, Lighted Horse Parade. And then on Tuesday, November 29th, here at 4:30 PM is our next city council meeting. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments?
Yes, please. I am Deana Johnson with and I'm representing the Lighted Horse Parade, Old Fashioned Christmas, Merchants on Move. And I'm here because we requested that there's no parking between the lights on Friday, really after like 1:00 or 2:00 because our events start at 3:00 pretty consistently. So this is kind of like a little bit of a reminder, but the second part of that is during our original request, we wanted the parking lot next to Merchants on the Move, that little parking lot barricaded off during that same period of time. And so I'm asking now if that wasn't part of the request, I'm asking for that either way, so that's okay.
She was better also?
Yep. Just a small parking lot, not the entire.
No, I don't think so. Just a small parking lot. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, that should be no problem.
Okay, awesome, and I hope to see y'all there.
Thank you, Deana. Anyone else for citizens' comments? Anyone else? Item number three additions, deletions to the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, is our motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four A is approval of council minutes from October 25th, 2022. Item four B is approval accounts payable listing. Item four C one is financial report, which is in your packet. Item four C two is a police report, which is in your packet. Item four D certify to property taxes. The first property is at 33 Northeast First Avenue, utility bill amount of $246.64. The second property is at 34 Northwest Third Avenue, utility bill of an amount of $159.91. Item four E is cigarette license for 2023 for Larry's Supermarket, Brittany Dawkins, Southtown Sea Stores, Jeannie Hublin, Park Region Co-op, Susan Bergerman, Paul's at Pelican, Luke Lorzello, Family Dollar, Carolyn Brown, Dollar General, DG Retail. Item number four, FS Recreational Game License 2023, VFW Gilmore, Week Post, 5252, Pelican Rapids Pool Hall, Chet Netteston. Item four G is business license 2023, Mobile Home Park of Z&amp;Z Associates. Item four H is plumbers registration for 2023, Wrigley Mechanical, Blake Rigney, Hanson's Plumbing and Heating, Jason Scruff, Green's Plumbing and Heating, Nicholas Green. Item four I is outdoor sales lot 2023, Alan Johnson Auto Connection and Brad Sacks Motors and Recreation. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve, as presented.
Second? Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number five is library report and we have Member David Gottenborg with us here this evening. Are there any questions for David after viewing the report? Or David, do you have anything for us other than watching the report?
I think I want to welcome Julie, she attended our first meeting and there was a reminder Wayne will be, you know, leaving the library board beginning in January. And then I just want to say a special thanks to the Friends of the Library. This last year, the total of $12,000, which is really quite remarkable. And they do this through the tablescapes, the fundraising, and they also do this through the book trailer, so that's really nice. That donation, the Friends, is used specifically for the children's library to buy books for the, for that part of the library. So thank you for them.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to, in the, when I reviewed the library board minutes, the minutes reflected that the discussions or the budget committee meeting that we had with, with the library board, in the minutes, what I got out of the minutes was that the city was committing to making up any wage shortfalls at the library and I just wanted to be clear for everybody that when, when you use the term minutes, that you're referring to really the budget committee, which was just Mayor Foster or Councilman Foster, Mayor Frazier and myself, and that didn't commit the city council to making any decision whatsoever on what they're going to do. And I believe discussion, what the point was that, or the discussion was that at the end of the year, if there is a shortfall, that the city council could definitely take a look at, make in the library wages whole if they need to do that.
I, I think that from what I remember about that discussion too, and I just made a brief comment in our minutes, but due to staffing, we really didn't have a perfectly good quarter to look at to make the best guess estimate. And in the past, our estimate, usually we've come in under that number. So our discussion that day would be is that as we move forward in this coming year and we see how an entire year plays out where we are fully staffed, we may be closer to that number and I think that's, that's what we talked about, right?
Any other questions from Mr. Gottenborg? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is Foam Express Agreement, lien allowance. And we have Mr. John Omen here this evening. Don, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, sure. When the council, when, when the council executed the quick claim deed between the city and Foam Express, there's a lot up in the industrial park, Article number five of that stated that the grantee, the Foam Express couldn't have any mortgages or liens on that property unless they first obtained written consent from the city to do that. And so the city attorney had drafted the agreement, which I believe you guys sat, got sat at your station before you. The reason it wasn't in the packet was because we didn't have it prior to the packet going out last week. Anyway, the city attorney put this agreement together and the agreement basically just gives them the consent to have the mortgage on there. And I know there was a term in the, in the quick claim deed that if they decided to not go forward with their project and they ended up returning the property back to the city, they would have to clear, the agreement basically states that they would have to clear any mortgages or liens on that property prior to turning it back to the city. So the city attorney isn't here to talk about the agreement that they drafted, but the one thing that, that kind of got brought up to my attention was in, in the agreement itself, Councilman Strand asked or brought up the fact that it doesn't reference the property, it kind of references it by the quick claim deed that was executed. And so I was going to just ask the city attorney or if it's, if it would make much of a difference or if we could basically leave as is or reference to Lot 3, Block 2, Industrial Park, so it really points at that. And then also there was a kind of a type of thing in here, but I, she's not here, so I don't know.
So that maybe, that maybe advocates this?
I don't know why not, I mean, just to.
As long as I can get approval tonight.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, what we, what we would do is basically, how it would be changed would be to, in that agreement, it would just say that is subject to the quick claim deed regarding Lot 3, Block 2, Industrial Park, signed, she had the word signed, but should be signed on or about September 27th. So it'd be just add that little addition and correcting the word sign to say signed. And with that, that's the only changes we would make. And then it would be the city clerk and the mayor signing it and then I believe John Omen signing it on behalf of Foam Express. And we could take care of getting a new one done up tomorrow and have it executed. I believe, right, Danielle?
Did you have anything else, John?
No, we're, we've got financing in place to just, you know, want to get it done, so we can get moving.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I move to approve with the two changes or additions.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Thank you, John. Are we ready for item number seven, Don?
Sure.
It's Chris on?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number seven is City Hall Upper Four Draft Purchase Agreement. There's a copy of that that was handed out.
Yeah, this is another one that was not in the packet because we didn't have it prior to the packet being sent out.
So we have Chris Smith from Burton joining us via Zoom and Jade is here from Larson Funeral Home also. Okay, Don?
So the purchase agreement basically that was sent out, again, the council really didn't have much time to look at it. Once we got it, we did email it out so that you could try and have some time prior to the meeting. Excuse me, again, neither one of the attorneys that drafted this thing are present, but there was some, some terms that were discussed and I'm kind of, again, I don't know what the conversation was between the city attorney or the attorneys, so I'm kind of ad libbing here a little bit. But from what I could see looking at the agreement, the things that were talked about when Mr. Smith and Jade were here at the council prior, in regards to the terms of the sale, that type of thing seemed to be in here just fine. But there was other things that the council and Burton did not talk about specifically that were in this, I don't, I can recall in some cases if they were alluded to. I know we brought up the whole idea of, of, you know, much like a condo, you know, the upstairs and downstairs and in the agreement, there actually does talk about actually establishing like a condominium association type thing in agreement. And so those types of things weren't necessarily talked about in any detail. And then when you get to, I'm just going to jump to page eight just because, and I'm looking at basically the redline version too. So yeah, page eight, on the bottom of it, it talks about the allocation of closing expenses. And then it talks about the seller's responsibility, the buyer's responsibility, some of those things, just making sure, you know, that the council understands the responsibilities of both seller and buyer. And the rest of the agreement, I think a lot of it was just general typical language that you'd see, but you know, there was some things in here, like I said, that really wasn't talked about before and so the council just needs to be, I'm hoping y'all have a chance to read through it and look at it and think it through, but unless the council has any questions regarding the terms, I guess, I don't have anything more to say. I wish the attorneys were here, or ours anyway.
I have three or four questions myself. Can you hear me, Chris?
Yes, I can. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, go ahead.
Page two, item number E, 5E, it talks about inspection. Who is doing this inspection of the property?
That's just, that's more standard language like what Don says, but if anything, we would, let's see, what does that say exactly? You know, we would have a contractor probably come through and look for anything out of the ordinary that maybe we don't know about. I don't expect they'll find anything.
Okay.
But I'm assuming that language is in there so that, you know, when we, we do come to an agreement on all these terms and we decide to build it, there's, there's no surprises. So my guess is I'd have to look at this again and, and talk to our folks about it, but we probably, you know, we have an opportunity to do that, but I'm guessing we wouldn't do it, we'd already been through the space, you know, probably half a dozen times in the last year or so.
Okay. Next question, item number eight, is safety improvement payment regarding the sprinklers? When you get possession of this property, when do you plan on installing the sprinkler system to safeguard the lower level of the building?
I would say that would be one of the early parts of the project because that's, you know, when we, all of the finishing work would go on basically over the top of that, right? So that's one of the first things we do. So let's say we come to an agreement on the purchase agreement, we need to finalize a few budget numbers, and our hope would be to start, let's say, in early 2023 and that would be one of the first things we do. So if, if I had to put a timeline on that, I'd say sometime in first quarter next year.
Okay. Like I said, my last question, item on page nine, item number 24B, it talks about the buyer's expenses. The buyer and the seller are going to share one half of architectural and surveying costs. Do we have any idea what those costs would amount to?
Yeah, so this is just costs associated with turning it into a condominium, of course. So all the architectural fees for the plans we've done, those are all at our expense. I wouldn't expect much for architectural, but for the surveying costs and creating the condominium, you know, we don't have, we have an estimate for the surveying, that's about, let's say about $4,000 and I would guess, creating the condominium agreement is more, you know, that's legal fees, so, you know, you have your city attorney, we have our attorney. If we total up their costs, if we could come up with that split in half, that could be a horse piece, right? So, you know, just to be safe, I would say maybe we add $2,000 and I would save $6,000 in the neighborhood of that to create those docks. I have to come up with an estimate right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, have any questions for Chris or Jade that's with us? Jade, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
If, if, Chris, again, if I could just point out one or two other things here quickly if you haven't had a chance to read it. In the, in Article 1E, we, we left that intentionally a little vague about where the property line would go because we haven't actually surveyed yet, so we don't know exactly where it would go. But the idea there being, you know, we take the second floor, we would take approximately half of the real estate, however, the, the property line by the Verizon Tower would be placed such that, you know, the Verizon Tower would still be on the city's side of the land and our, our property line would be just north of that. So that obviously the tower, you know, you still have the tower lease and that's all stays under your, with, is associated with the first floor, so. But we didn't specifically say where it would go in there, but I mentioned it's, the property line would be in a mutually agreeable spot. That was one thing in Article 1E. And I guess I was just going to mention that, just to confirm, at one point we talked about it, about splitting the, basically the cost to split the lot and create a condo agreement. At one point, sometime ago, we agreed to split those, I thought, so we put that in here, so hopefully that's okay.
Chris, that property line on the east side of the building where the tower will be included in the city's property, if you're, will that line be the same if you drew a line through the building and go out through the east property? Would that line up?
That might keep things simple if we go that route. That would just be a little bit more land, you know, served to maintain for the city and a little less for us, but, you know, it wouldn't really amount to a whole lot, I don't think. It's just, you know, a little more grass to cut. I think that would, that would amount to. Do we, is there a, Don, is there a sprinkler system, irrigation system for the property too?
On the west side.
On the west side, Brian says.
Okay, but not on the east side?
Correct.
Okay, we just need to put something else in there about that, about maintaining it. You know, we've maintained our side, you know, if any of the heads go out, any work needs to be done and the city can maintain the south side. And then of course, address the water usage for that, but you know, we'll worry about that, we'll write that all into the condo agreement.
Are you ready to move to approve the?
Mayor, if I could, just so everybody basically has, so we know everybody's kind of looked at some of these other costs. On page three, under title examination there, the seller will furnish buyer title insurance commitment to the property, so we'll have to do a title insurance. I think, I think there was a couple, there's a couple other places where there are just some, some other things that, and I want to make sure that this gets clarified. On page six, down at the bottom, that last paragraph, the buyer may hire, I don't know if they plan on doing this, but may hire a phase one environmental site assessment being done. And it talks about if there are any corrections that need to be done, the city would cover those corrections up to not to exceed $5,000. In excess of $5,000, then we'd have a discussion about how them costs are going to be shared. There was, obviously Brent mentioned the condo association stuff, but also on page nine, Article 26, title insurance, that the owner will provide title insurance commitment in the amount of $800,000, the cost will be paid for by the seller. So see, some of these other costs, I'm sure they're not great costs, but they are costs and we don't know what, what those amounts are. Just to make sure that, that the councils are aware that there are other, other costs associated with it too. So that's, yeah, I just wanted to point out those items also.
Counsel?
Lindsay went through this?
Yeah.
With the law office?
Yeah, Lindsay and Burton's attorney are the ones that drafted the purchase agreement. And it was, you know, based off of the conversations you guys.
Yeah.
Go here, motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, second then. Motion and second to agree to the sale and purchase agreement. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jade.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number eight, senior center purchase agreement. That was also handed out. Don, you want to address that? We have Lana Gachter.
Yeah, this is another agreement that was drafted by the city attorney. I know there was some conversations between her and, and Ms. Greshroot as well as, for the most part, the email conversations between the two were also seed seed to the city, Danielle, the clerk and myself, so we kind of see what they were talking about. But technically it was drafted by the city attorney. In reviewing it, again, I got a couple of things. I guess the second page, not page number, but in Article number five, where we, you know, we talked about if Lana should decide not to do anything or like it states in here, the purchaser shall not have the ability to convey the real estate to any other party other than the city of Pelican Rapids in the 18 months from the date of closing. Within that time period, I guess my question is, should there be some more specific language in here as a, to the effect that if Lana starts doing something in that building and then decides for whatever reason not doing to convey it back to the city and she's got dollars into it? It doesn't say anything about if, if construction has started and she's put investment into it and she has to convey it back to the city at what cost? Is it, you know, the same 19-5, we give it back to her? Is it the 19-5 plus any capital investment she's made to, for instance, the roof? You know, it doesn't specify anything, it just says it needs to, she can't sell to anybody else for 18 months. So I had a question there. And then similar to the agreement with Mr. Omen and Foam Express, we're, we're doing the same thing here that we did in that one where it says purchaser shall not cause any mortgage lien or encumbrance to be attached to the real estate in the 18 months from the date of closing. Well, we already know that she's going to be basically getting, I'm assuming a loan or some type of a lien or mortgage to do this project. So now we're basically creating more work for the city and for the attorney because before she can go and get a loan, she's got to do the same thing that John Omen just did, have another agreement drafted up, written confirmation from the city that she can go ahead and get a mortgage or a lien. So my question to Lindsay would have been, can we just take this out of there? Or are we going to have her go through that same process? So that's just a question because we're requiring her to get written approval before she can start doing any work in which she has to get a lien or a mortgage on. And the other thing, and maybe you can talk on this one too, on page three, under Article 8F, it says to the seller's knowledge that present use as an office building is in 8F, it says, "To the seller's knowledge, present use as an office building is in compliance with the zoning for the real estate," et cetera, et cetera. Do you refer to this as an office building? I would, to me, that term, it's not an office building.
It's not an office building.
Do you want, uh, do you wanna address the microphone, please?
Yeah, I mean, I would consider it an office building, but I wouldn't, I don't know how else you'd wanna classify it. Many manufacturing plants?
Commercial building.
Commercial building, yeah.
I would say commercial building, because an office building is, is not, I would-
To me, that's like cubicles and your engineers and, you know?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So I would like to change that to say, "Commercial," present use as a, or the, well, it says the, yeah, the present use as a-
And this is probably because they have the generic template that she-
That's what I'm thinking.
-in the previous transaction, I think.
So what will be the verbiage then?
I think we just-
Change it to "commercial building."
Her building, we just change "office" to "commercial building."
Yeah.
Because it is in the commercial zone, so that makes sense. And then the other thing, and I guess on Article seven, the prior page, again, um, the, the city, as the seller, shall deliver an easement agreement, so there has to be an easement agreement that's gonna be drafted up, that basically, we had talked originally about the, uh, the concrete stairway on the, uh, northwest side and, and giving her an easement for that, but I also pointed out that there is another, in talking to the city attorney, there is another exit on that doorway, on that north side, on the east end of that north side, and so, the language was revised a little bit to reflect that the easement that's gonna be drafted up is gonna include 10 feet, um, easements into either one of them doors, so that she can use either one of them as an, as a entrance into the building, as she chooses to do that, so.
What about the, uh, east side of the building? Is there a need for an easement there?
There is no, no.
There's no access on the east side, no.
Just, just on the two entrances on the north side.
Well, no, that north side, I'm planning on getting rid of that east door anyways, so it's really only that west door that's the question. But my question was, the way it's written up, is it 10-foot wide span facing that door, or is it 10-foot wide the length of the building? Just the 10-foot in front of that door?
Just the 10-foot coming out from the door, um, onto the parcel to the, to the model.
Yeah, that works, I was just clarifying that.
And in the easement, we'll just, you know, make sure that that's, if that's what works, that's the way to be drafted up.
That works, yeah.
So, did she have anything else to say?
Counsel, have any questions?
I have another-
Lindsay's here, can you add that?
Yeah, Lindsay made it.
Sorry, Paul, you're pretty late.
I have three or four of them, I'm gonna work myself backwards, and item, item number 33, I have no page numbers, so I don't really know what it is. There's a disclosure portion, what's the reason for the disclosure?
You know, it's just typical language that we have in our purchase agreements, it's nothing to get worked up or decided about, but.
Okay. And item number 19, it talks about earnest money.
Thought I caught those. So that is just typical with the closing, that if there's earnest money deposited, you know, it, it's, uh, it goes to the, the seller or the purchaser, you know, the, what happens with that earnest money is usually within, but there's no earnest money in this.
No, I didn't think there was, but we still have to include that language?
But it doesn't hurt having it in there, I mean, it's just, it's just nothing.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially used.
It doesn't require that there be any?
Correct. There is no earnest money in this agreement, and it's just, again, typical language that is in there, um, I thought, I caught anything related to earnest money deposits, but I guess I'm mised by.
So, uh, page one, item number three, I don't mean to pick you here, but it says, uh, the money shall be paid in cash, does cash mean the same as check?
Yeah, cash is, just means cash or certified funds. So cashier is check. Oh, you're not gonna bring us a case of cash, huh? I didn't have that. So, yeah, cash or certified funds, just as long as it's, you know, we know that it's available.
Counsel, have any questions?
The patient have the question. Yeah.
Counsel, have any questions?
Do we wanna talk about this rider reverter with Lindsay here to?
Yeah. So, what we talked about, Lindsay, in page two on Article 5, the rider reverter, what I brought up was, uh, kinda towards the bottom third of that, it says purchaser shall not have the ability to convey the real estate to any other party other than the city of Pelican Rapids in the 18 months from the date of closing. Well, I'm assuming that, within that 18 months, Lana's gonna have a lot of money stuck into that building, so if for some reason it has to be reverted back to the city, should it be more specific about, if it comes back to the city, is the city basically turn around and have to give the, the 19-5 paid back, or, uh, does it just revert back, and whatever dollars she has into the building, basically, she loses?
So this was a little tricky for me, just because we don't typically have a rider reverter situation like this, um, but my suggestion to just kinda keep, keep it across the board with everybody's understanding expectations, changing the language to say, "In the 18 months from the date of closing, unless purchaser has begun the process of remodeling," you know, just repeating the language, updating, improving, and remodeling the property as stated here in.
Yeah, and that makes sense, because it, it was all about, in my opinion, it was all about if nothing happens in 18 months, she gives it back, but if she starts working six months, then that's all, all void, because she started work, and she can do whatever at that point, if she puts a new roof on the building, and decides at that point, and if 18 months, we're still in that 18-month period, and she decides at that point, "I'm not gonna continue on," well then, you know, she put a new roof on, technically, she should be able to turn around and try and sell that to recover her investment in that building, and not have to worry about whether she has to sell it back to the city or not.
And I think that's kind of the purpose, right?
That's what we talked about.
And what you can do within that is, you know, if, if within that 18 months purchaser intends to sell, she could just provide notice to the city and give you guys, you know, 30 days to object, or whatever, if you guys don't think that her remodel or, or update or improvement meets the, you know, what, what was, what is the understanding here?
So what does counsel think, um, regarding that?
I'm not worried.
I don't think anyone is, but.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, the question, that's, I'm just kidding.
No, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not expecting, based on this, that she puts any money into that building within the 18 months, and something happens that she has to give it, you know, sell back or give it back to the city, and it just says convey, it doesn't say at any cost.
Right, and, and what you can add there too, is that if she intends to sell the property in that 18 months, deliver it notes to say, "If you guys have any objections, you can provide your objection to her in writing," and then the discussion of, of the conveyance and the terms of that conveyance would just be, you know, between you guys. And if she has put a significant amount of money into it, you know, if she's not in a position, "Well, I'd like to recoup my investment here at least," um, then that would be kind of up for negotiation, because, I mean, the intent, as we all understand it, is if in 18 months, the building sits idle and does nothing, then yeah, she just gives it back.
Did you have any comments, Lana?
No, the other, the only other one I was gonna go with was the same situation with your guys' written approval, that I use this property as collateral on anything mortgages that I want to-
Yeah, that was the second part of that bottom, the, the last sentence of that, Article 5.
Remove that sentence, if it kind of misses it.
Yeah, we can just remove that, because otherwise, we know she's gonna have to get a mortgage, and she's gonna have to come back to the council again to get written approval, just like, um, Omen did.
Okay. And I, and I put that in there because that's what you guys historically done, but if you don't want that in there, you take it out.
I think we take it out, because we know she's gonna do it.
Right.
It's gonna save everybody a step.
Yeah, and what you could do is just include similar language with the Foam Express agreement that says that if she does cause mortgage lien or encumbrance, she's solely responsible and shall indemnify and hold the city, regardless, you know, where you're deeding it to her anyway, so that there shouldn't be any reason the city would be attached, um, to any mortgage lien or encumbrance, um, but in the situation where she'd have to convey it back, she would obviously need to take care of that and indemnify the city in that, in that situation, again, I mean, you're anticipating it, you pay that.
So that needs to be added, that language?
Yeah, I, I gotta do a little amending here, so. If, if, if that's what you guys want, if that's what counsel wants, I would just change it to kind of mirror the language of the, the agreement with Foam Express that I prepared.
I'd say so. Do you all need a motion for that, though? I don't think, we just agree to it, right?
That could be included, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I don't think you need a motion, I think basically you just need to see the amended agreement to-
Yeah, 'cause I, I think you guys just have to make your motion to enter into the agreement once it's final and agreed upon by everyone. There was one more thing, you did the addition to the conditions on real estate with Auto-Tail Power, I mean, did you do any work on that?
Right.
They should have that version, I'm trying to reprint, yeah.
Yeah.
And is it, at the end, is it a responsibility of purchaser or responsibility of seller?
Page, uh, page four, page one.
Okay. Okay.
Very last one.
And then, Lindsay, the other change we were gonna make was, um, Article 8F, just changing the present use as an office building, we're gonna change it to "commercial building."
Okay.
Counsel?
I make a motion to approve with the changes and agreements made here tonight, uh, this purchase agreement with Lana.
Second, second. We have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion.
With that motion, second, with the approval of the city council, or city council approving the purchase agreement, I'm assuming that means you wanna sign-
With the amended?
With the amendments.
Yeah.
You'd wanna sign at the next city council meeting.
Are you gonna have a easement at that time also?
I could, yeah, I should be able to have-
I think you should.
Yeah.
You're at the next council meeting and approve the easement at the same time.
Yeah, I can have an easement and be ready by then, too. Okay.
Any more discussion?
Do we have a list of the changes, 'cause we got quite a few of them there?
Yeah.
Do you have those, Lindsay, or?
I don't, but I, I will get them and make sure that I've got them right. I can email you on CC Danielle, so we're, we're missing those.
Any more discussion?
So Lana's gotta do this, here.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, second if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Polls the same? Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Yeah, apologies for being late, did we handle six and seven, or not quite yet?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And there were no questions for me on the purchase agreement for City Hall, I, I reviewed it, the version from Amy Clark, and I had no issues with it, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item number nine is canvas election results, and that was handed out to you on your desk this evening, Danielle?
Yes, so I handed out a resolution with all the, um, election results in front of you, so I just need that resolution to be, uh, approved by counsel.
I'll move we approve Resolution 2022 dash 22, 20, dash 22.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, second if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Polls the same? Motion carried. Item number 10 is street parks report, we have Superintendent Brian Holson with us this evening.
Pretty simple, uh, council meeting so far, so I'll just continue. We, uh, obviously have, have our snow, snow equipment already, I think I did tell you that, um, waiting on the county to finish their sand salt shed, so we can have, have a good supply of sand, we've already gone through, I believe, close to 28 yards this week, just sanding and trying to keep things under control that continually have iced up over and over again, so, um, this is interesting, we went right from, from sweeping, sweeping leaves to, to moving snow, so, um, we'll see how that, how the winter goes, hopefully it's nicer to us than last year, so. Touch on a couple other things that were requested, that were done, uh, back several months ago, Apex was here and requested to have some soil horns dug down, made more dry, after we had some cracking and, and different things, and basically what, what they found with their soil horns is that they feel like there's potentially moisture under the street, so they, their recommendation was to go back and, and, uh, tear it all up, down to six feet deep, and reading the whole thing, and, and after talking with Bob, um, just prior to the seal cope that we did this past summer, we felt that we could seal it up from the top, and we will be reconstruction, reconstruct it in probably 20 years when it's, uh, due, due again for reconstruction, instead of going back and, and trying to put all that money back into it, so, that's pretty much done now, and that project is over, also. And then over on Ridgecrest Drive, where we put the water and sewer in for the resident that, uh, was wanting to build a house over there, the only lot on the whole street that didn't have water and sewer to it, um, we did get the, we got one lift put on that where they dug it up, and so it's a little bit rough and it sank a little bit, so our, our plan is to come back and mill it, and then put another lift in, in the spring, summer of next year, so in 2023, so that that'll be smooth again. Felt it was better to cover it and leave it gravel, and try to fight with that all summer, our whole winter, and into the spring, when it's just not, not feasible when the material's terrible, that time of the year, so. That is what those two projects consist of. As far as the parks go, we do have the skinny ring set up, now, not that I want it to get colder, but it needs to get colder before we can start, uh, probably gonna put the liner in it, uh, this week, and probably put a little bit of water in there, so, we, we are advertising for help, so if you know anybody that's looking to, man, own a farming house for the winter, send them to City Hall, or on the city website, I believe, is the application form also, so, um, and then we do have, I did have a request from, from the, the school, which I think is kind of interesting, but they, they want permission to put street Christmas lights on the suspension bridge over the, through the holiday season, and I said, "I don't have a problem with it, but I need the council to approve it in order to, to let you do it," you know, let you turn them on and, and use the electricity of the park, so, basically, I believe it'll be starting next week through the holiday season, and then they'll turn them off, so, but it's all on them, they've, they've purchased the lights, um, evidently they've got a grant for the lights, so, they've, they're gonna take care of it all, so, like I said, I didn't have a problem with it, and if you guys don't mind, you can, we can give them approval.
You're looking for a motion?
Yeah, we'll need a motion, I believe, to, to, to have them on the bridge.
You said the school?
Yes, I've been in contact with Doug Brugman, as a matter of fact, so, yeah.
Who will actually hang them, will be the city department or the-
They're, they're, I believe they possibly are already hung, he said he wanted to do it when it was warm, so, they, they're doing all of it, it's just on city properties, they need to give permission that way, so.
Is there any signage there with these lights?
Not that I know of, no, just, just lighting it up, so, I'm sure it's similar to, like, when they do the luminary walk in, in February, you know, they have the lights on there, now they'll just be on through the holiday season, so.
Go ahead, hear a motion for the-
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, second if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Polls the same? Motion carried.
And just two more notes, um, one on the senior center buildings, I did talk to Auto-Tail Power today, they will be doing that underground power in the spring, they're having trouble with contractors all season evidently, so, um, that they'll have it on the schedule to do in the spring, and that's probably better anyway, uh, I don't really like soaring under the streets when they're frozen and stuff like that this time of year, 'cause it leaves that, that vacancy, so, um, that's, that's all I have for you.
So a motion or approve Brian's report?
Can you know?
He's got his question. He's got a question.
Two question.
Uh oh.
So where are the borings? I was watching for them.
They did, I believe they did four of them out there.
On the, on the street?
Yep. And then they patched them back. They're only about four inch borders, and then they patched them right back in. And then it was steel coated, of course, so you can't see them. They did them prior to seal coating.
Oh, okay. And then why are we, why do we have to go back in and dig around the corner then? What's that about?
On Ridgecrest?
Yeah.
We'll just mill the surface and then put another layer of asphalt over the top to even it out.
Oh, so you're done digging, though?
Yeah, we're done digging, yep. They got the water and sewer line into that property.
Okay.
So it's all ready, and I believe it's been taken care of as far as the agreement the city had with their.
Who's gonna do the asphalt, then?
Whoever I can find, just like this year.
Okay.
You wait for one to come around and you, and you talk to him quick.
Okay. Because, all right. Thank you. That's, it's a nice street.
Yep.
Is there a motion or approve, of course?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, second if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Hey, Brian? Let's go to item number 11, utilities, control systems improvement. There was three documents in our packet, and Don is gonna talk to those. Sorry. Earlier this year, we had a, a control system crash out at the wastewater plant. And what ended up happening was the computer system out there went down, which basically controls everything. The guys were able, from People's Services, the operators were able to continue to operate the plant, but they had to do it manually and instead of the automation system that we have in place. And it worked, but part of that process was having InControl first try and remote in and get the plant back up out, and they're down in the metro area. And when they found that they couldn't do that, they figured it was a hard crash of the computer. So they brought a, they configured a laptop, because they have all of our, our programming backed up at their, on their property or down there. So they were able to build a hard drive up on a laptop, bring it up here, plug it in, and then once they got that up and going, figure out what the heck was going on in the system, and they got it all back up and going, he replaced the hard drive, rebuilt the hard drive in the computer, and then left. Well, then I had conversations with them about the state of the plant as it relates to our control systems down there. And what came out of that was I asked them for a proposal to upgrade it. And they sent me that proposal, and I wanted to sit down with the budget committee while we were doing the water and sewer budget prior to that, sit down with Mayor Fraser and Councilman Foster, and look at these proposals, have a conversation with InControl about the proposals and the state of the systems down there. And we did that recently. In the packet, you have basically two proposals that I'm gonna talk about. This first one is the Automation and Cybersecurity Service Plan. One of the things that, that we've kind of known about, or I've known about for a little while now, the League of Minnesota Cities, Minnesota Rural Water, really starting to stress the cybersecurity because of the, you know, the threat around the country. And actually, it might have been a couple of places where water, water or sewer system, treatment systems had been taken, had been hijacked or, or their systems had been infiltrated. And so that's beginning to be a bigger, bigger topic. Unfortunately, that's the case. And, and so one of the things that InControl talked about was our level of cybersecurity down there as we have it today and the level that, you know, the state's really pushing for, MPCA is pushing for. And we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we don't have the level of security that's recommended or that's required from the League of Minnesota Cities to be able to, in, in case something happens, to have any type of a problem covered by our insurance. And so one of the things we're looking at with this particular service plan is to make sure that we not only get up to where we need to be, but we maintain that level of security going forward. And so I'm gonna talk about the security plan first. And, you know, really, in, in going through this document, if you looked at it, what we're gonna try and do there is, is put together a firewall that, that keeps the system secure. The, the proposal talks about the automation of it all and then the maintaining of it over a period of time with warranties and everything else. When we talked to InControl about it, there was two different levels of, of protection that we could get. One of them was this alternate plan, which basically, in either case, there's a one-time system setup of putting together the, the firewall and all that stuff, and that's gonna be $1,418, regardless of which, which way we decide to go. But, but the comprehensive plan that they show here has an annual cost of $6,000 versus the, the alternate plan, which is $1,800 on an annual basis. And really, the difference really has to do with the, the level of warranty, what they look into on an annual basis, keep it all upgraded and everything else. Under the alternate plan, it doesn't do that. Basically, just gets it in place. And then there's an annual cost of that firmware that, it's not InControl's firmware of the system. It's, what the heck is the name of that? We already have the system in place. Slips my mind. Be with me a second. But it's the, it's the company that provides the firewall system and keeping their firmware updated. This doesn't, the, the alternate plan doesn't do that. It just gets everything up and running. In order to keep InControl keeping it updated and having the license to keep, that's what I'm thinking of, the license, annual license we need to have for that firmware, the, the comprehensive plan also updates that firmware, keeps that all up to date without any extra costs. And then obviously, the warranty and InControl watching it and doing an annual review of it and making sure it's all up to date. So from the, from the cybersecurity side of it, and, and any time to, Councilman Foster and Mayor Fraser, if you want to add anything to this, you surely can. But in looking at it and talking to InControl, we truly believe that the city, it's in the city's best interest in the long run to, to go with the comprehensive plan. Because if we go with the alternate plan, one of the downsides of it is if we don't keep it updated and something happens, it's gonna cost us probably a lot more, more than likely, any type of potential insurance claim or lack of insurance claim because we didn't keep it updated. So to protect the city to the greatest extent, we felt that we really need to do the comprehensive, which would be a one-time $1,400 bucks. But then annually, in the budget, we would have to have this $6,000 annual cost to keep this thing up and running, updated all the time and upgraded. So that's one piece of the puzzle. Anything you guys, Dr. Steve, wanna say on the cybersecurity?
Wasn't Lake Crystal, um, Lake Crystal, weren't they hacked?
I don't remember the, the city that was, but I know that there'd been, they might have mentioned one, but there's others out there that, that I think the league has kind of talked about.
I think they gave that example of that city of where that happened, and they'd upgraded their security thing right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the other side of this.
Steve's got a question here.
Go ahead.
Why does it have to be online?
Why, it's not online.
Well, why are we exposed or?
Well, be, well, well, the, the control systems itself are all, are, 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 um, the, part of the control systems itself is web-based because when there's an alarm that goes off or something like that, it's basically goes out to the operators through that firewall. So it's not really online. It is a VPN or whatever you want to call it, so it's kind of hidden, but hackers get into all this stuff. And so in order for our operators to be able to operate and maintain and, and oversee the system, they have to be able to do it. They do it through the automation, through their phones, that type of thing, as opposed to the old style of something happens and your phone at home, your landline rings that nobody has anymore and tells you, we got a problem, and then they have to run down and figure out what it is. So a lot of, in a lot of the cases, they're able to, able to see what's going on and correct it without even going down to the plant. More importantly is in order to have that capability for InControl to also remote in and take care of major issues for us without having to come up here, they're able to remote in and do it. That again means they have to have that access to the system or be able to get in through the firewall from outside the plant or off-site. And that's part of the reason for it also. And especially when you're talking about something that happens up there that we need our, our integrators like InControl or Preferred or whatever to be able to get in there and fix it, we want them to be able to do it, if possible, remotely. Because for them to come up, it's $1,000 before they even get here and touch anything. So if they can do it remotely, it's just a matter of a couple hundred bucks, maybe.
Just like your computer, if you have computer problems, you call a hotline to desk. This is the same way. There's, there's switches at the wastewater plant and the water plant. We, we can call them and flip the switch and they can control our plant or see what the prop, diagnosis from Twin Cities area without even coming up here. So it's, it's a lot more economical.
I said last time, I was surprised they didn't have a backup of the hard drive.
Well, that's one of the things about this, this system, too, is the, the computer that they're gonna be putting in has a redundant hard drive. So if, if something happens where one dies, they'll have that redundant drive, and they can switch over to that and then basically take the bad drive, swap it out, get everything redundant to get on that one. And that, we don't have that capability now. Maybe one reason is because we're running a, that, the computer that's there was a computer that was put in place at the last upgrade of the plant. It's running Windows 7, and that's another reason that we're having an issue is because Windows 7 is no longer supported for security issues.
There's another example. When the power went off the other day, it shut down some of the systems in the plant over here. Our maintenance people couldn't get them started again. They called the company that they're with. They were able to go in there electronically or digitally and restart everything. So it's kind of the same, same system. We don't lose a day or a day and a half waiting for somebody to drive up here.
Well, Sunday, it went off and on over 20 times at work for me.
Yeah.
That's damaging.
Yeah, well, it screwed up a lot of things when that.
I can imagine. Motor. All right, thanks.
Yeah, plus, one of the, one of the things, too, is those, those programmable logic controllers and boards, MIO boards, I call them out there. Every time we have a power glitch or used to have a power glitch, we take out a board. And then boards are getting very, very hard to come by. They're obsolete. In some cases, we've been able to maybe send them in and get them repaired, but that's even becoming harder and harder to find parts for these things. And so this, this, this upgrade also gets rid of all that stuff and upgrades it with the newer technology boards that are supposed to be available and the supplier there is saying, no, that's their, that's their most recent boards and electronic configurations, and they'll be good for 20, 30 years. We all know electronics change like crazy, but the other thing about this project and doing this now, the life expectancy of this before you really have to worry about it again should be 15 years, if not more. The existing boards that we have in there now are probably 20, 25 years old. They're beyond their life cycle. We should have replaced them a few years ago, but. The other thing about the, the upgrade project, not the cyber, but the upgrade project, as you saw on page six of this proposal, the cost to do this, they're saying is $357,389.
You're kind of.
Pardon?
Excuse me, you're kind of getting ahead of yourself because you're now, you're talking about the upgrade.
I, I started talking about the upgrade to the programmable logic and stuff, and the reason for having to upgrade it all that is because it's outdated.
Okay.
And the computer system is outdated. I'm, I kind of went beyond the cyber stuff.
Yeah, okay. We met, when we met the other day, Brent, Don, I, People's Services, and then.
InControl.
InControl. We looked at these and we came to the conclusion that the second plan, I, second plan, right? Second option was the best one for the security upgrade.
Well, the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan was the best one for the security upgrade. Now Don is talking about the whole control package for the plant. So now I think we're on the same page, sure.
So all the, all the computer system, all the programmable control logic, the interfaces, the terminals that the guys can go out there and look at things and see what's going on, all of that. And then the SCADA system, which talks to them guys, but also talks between the water and sewer plant, they talk back and forth, the plants do, through this, through the SCADA system. So all that stuff will be updated. And again, the, the proposal that we got from InControl was $357,389, and that doesn't include the cyber stuff. The cyber is an additional. But one of the things that they talked about, if we, if, if we want them to do these, the cybersecurity stuff, there's the supply chain issues, but the cybersecurity stuff, they can get done this year yet, which will be a good thing because then we get all that taken care of. And the computer, they can get in and get some of that stuff updated. But the majority of this stuff won't happen until, it'll be done before, sometime next year, before the fall of 2023. And that's partly because of the supply chain issues. They are willing to, because they sent me this original proposal months ago, and it's just taken this long for me to get to the point where we wanted to get together and talk to them about it. They have said that, you know, I asked them first off if that $357 is still a good number because it's been a few months. And they said they will hold that price now, but if we decide to wait and think this through until next year, then they can't guarantee that, number one, that that price could stay the same. But number two, the longer we wait, the longer we're gonna have to wait to get parts. And this plant right now, even to get the computer system in as soon as possible is kind of, you know, necessary. Because if we have another crash like that, well, we're in the same boat again. I think the last one cost us, you know, just to get that thing rebuilt again was $4,000, $5,000, you know. So as far as paying for this, the $357 part of it, it obviously is a chunk of money. And one of the things that I had done when we got the American Rescue Plan dollars, that $273,000, $274,000, one of the things that I did that we had to, to get set up through the Department of U.S. Treasury was to tell, to tell them what we were gonna use this money for. There were certain options, and we have to report that every year as, as we spend this money. Well, one of the things that I did right away was, we, we had talked about using that money to help offset the cost of the water sewer mains in the 2024 project. So water sewer related costs. Well, that was what we were originally thinking of using it for. When I had to report to the Treasury, all I had to tell them was using it for water sewer expenses, basically. Well, we're just changing from the water sewer expenses for the 2024 project, and we're gonna take that money now and we're gonna put it into this project. So we don't have to borrow the money. We're gonna use the American Rescue Plan, but that gets us $273. Where's the other $80,000 to $100,000 coming from? And so I reached out to PFA, the Public Facilities Authority, because we have that based on the last project we did. We had to put so much money away based on our affluent out of the plant and put that in reserves. And we can't use them reserves without first getting written okay from the PFA. So I sent them a letter requesting that they allow us to use $100,000 of our reserves with this ARP money to cover the additional cost to pay for the upgrade of this $360,000. And they, they sent back an approval and said, yeah, go ahead and do. And they, they sent back, uh, an approval and said, yeah, go ahead and do that. Because we were using it for upgrading or improving the plant. We had asked for a request for, to use some of that money before, one time before, for operating expenses because our fund balances were getting down there a little bit and they said no, but because this is to upgrade the SCADA systems, they said fine. So we have the money to do it. If we do it, you know, the council approves it and we, we get on, on, on the schedule for InControl to get this done, then we have the money to cover it. If we wait, then we don't know what the cost will be. And I think our recommendation, uh, from the Budget Committee is to go forward with the comprehensive plan for cybersecurity and also to upgrade, upgrade the control systems as presented in the proposal in the packet.
Hesman Foster, anything to add?
No.
Question. Is this related to the water damage we had down there at all?
No.
Or was that a long time ago?
No, no. The, uh, the, when the, when that system, control system crashed, it crashed because the computer was just old.
Okay. Counsel's wishes.
I'll move we do the comprehensive, um, cybersecurity plan and the, um, upgrade to the control system. A second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
So if we do this, where does the money come from to do these sewer mains for the twenty twenty-four project? That, that, our portion of that, instead of being able to use the two hundred and seventy-three thousand ARP funds for that, we'll just have to bond for that much more. And, you know, along those lines too, you know, and, and Bob Schlemann from Apex will be here at the end of the month to talk a little bit more about, um, the, uh, the grants that we put him in motion to apply for. Now that's not water sewer related, but, but along those lines, one of the things that we are planning to do, uh, is look for other options to help us pay for the sewer, the, the city's water and sewer utility upgrade. One of the things that, uh, the federal administration did was they put in place that, that, uh, American Rescue Plan also. There's portions of that, that, that when they passed that, it was one of those things, let's pass it and then figure out what's in it. Well, they're still trying to figure out what's all in it, but supposedly there's supposed to be a bunch of money in that thing to help communities upgrade their, their, uh, water and sewer, their utility systems. And so we're going to continue to look for those opportunities and write grants, but along those lines also, we know that, uh, the debt service to the city for that, for that, um, that portion of the project, the utility portion, is going to add substantial debt service to the city. So one of the things we're also going to want to do is make sure that we, um, apply, um, to the PFA to try and get a portion of that loan, instead of the whole eight or ten million dollars, or eight million dollars for the infrastructure, the utility side of it, that eight million dollars all being loaned from the PFA, we're hoping to get a portion of that in grant too. And it very well could be more than two hundred and seventy-three thousand, if we can get a portion of that granted to us. That typically is done through looking to see what the existing debt level of the city residents is for a city of twenty-five hundred people. And they, through their formulas, they figure, yeah, you guys got a lot of debt now, um, we'll give you some relief through grants, then, then that'll be good. So we're going to try and make sure that we look at any grant through the PFA as we apply for the, for the loans to pay for the utility upgrades.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Item number twelve is project ninety-three pay request for seventeen thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, which is included in your packet. And Don, do you want to speak for that?
Yes, this is for the Otter Tail County Garage Utility Extension up there. The project is done, this is the last pay request for, uh, this project. Um, this covers the, the contractor's portion of it, but in talking with the engineers, there's no more bills coming from them either, so this will wrap up that project and will be one less thing for Mr. Wilson.
Motion approved.
I move to approve payment.
Second. Motion second. Discussion?
Again, this is just reimbursed by the county again? Correct. Once you guys approve this and I get the mayor's signature on this, I will be sending this all down to the county to get reimbursed for it, a hundred percent. Good point taken.
Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Item number thirteen, water tower cleaning proposal, and I think Don has a couple of them here.
Yeah, I do.
Do you want to explain the situation?
Look at the water tower, you'll see the situation. Um, it is dirty. Uh, the white, the white paint that we put on the tower versus that light blue is sure nice, but it also shows the, the grit that's collected. I can't remember the last time we cleaned it, it might not have been cleaned since, I don't think it's been cleaned since we actually did the, the, uh, the, the extra interior and repainted it and all that stuff, uh, in twenty sixteen?
Yeah, somewhere.
Whatever, twenty fifteen. But they say every, about every five or six years, your water tower is probably going to need to be cleaned. So, uh, another thing that wasn't in the packet because I didn't get the proposals necessarily in time for the, for the packets, but I reached out to two different companies, one is called Water Tower USA, and I believe they're out of Wisconsin, and the other company is, um, Maguire Iron out of Sioux Falls, and they do this. They basically put, like the skyscrapers in New York, they put them, uh, devices on and they pull themselves up and they actually power wash the, the water towers. They're only doing the outside, we don't need the interior done. Uh, Water Tower USA gave me a quote of ninety-five hundred dollars. When we did this last time too, it cost us, I think it was like five or six grand to wash it, and that was a few years ago, um, quite a few years ago, to just do the outside. The Maguire Iron out of Sioux Falls bid gave us a quote of nine thousand. So my recommendation is for the council to accept, and again, we want to get on their schedule so that we can get this done next year. Uh, my recommendation is to approve Maguire Iron's, you know, proposal of nine thousand dollars to wash the outside of the tower.
So moved. Hear a motion second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion?
This comes out of the water?
Yeah, it'll just come out of the water utility.
Yep.
Any more discussion?
Who noticed it was dirty? I didn't notice.
Oh, yeah.
Is it?
It's terrible. Tomorrow, that's the first thing you're going to look.
I, yeah, for sure.
Oh, boy.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. At this time, I believe we can go to item number fifteen, school, city, county collaborative project. We have School Superintendent Brian Cork with us this evening, he's going to address this topic. Also, we have School Board Chair John Carter and also Trevor Steves and Rudy Martinez here. So, Mr. Cork?
Yes, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, myself along with Mr. Carter, our Chair of our, uh, school district, and Mr. Steves, our Buildings and Grounds Superintendent. Like to talk to you about the multi-use building that we talked to here earlier in the fall. And, um, you can call the building, uh, warming house, you can call the building, uh, trailhead. Uh, right now, we're kind of using a multi-use building. And, uh, multi-use building for the school district, uh, the city of Pelican Rapids and Otter Tail County. And what we'd like to talk to you about is the benefits of the building, and then Mr. Steves is going to talk to you about what the building is going to look like and, and the warming house and the, and the trailhead part of the building. So I just want to talk to you about just a few of the benefits that we see for the city of Pelican Rapids. One is, um, it's a trailhead. You've been talking about having a trailhead that's in Pelican Rapids. Right now, if we would, um, work with the city and the county, this would all work out. The trailhead would be at Chauncey Martin Parking Lot, that would be right next to the football field, uh, that building that we currently have there, we would tear down and build this building, which would contain the trailhead and the warming house. Trailhead would have an overhead, and Mr. Steves will talk about this, um, in more detail, and will have a place to air up tires and restrooms. Warming house, uh, would be for the winter. Right now, the skating rink is going to be up, is up by the sledding hill, it's right be, right behind it, and it would be a nice place to have the skating rink because of the sledding hill, now families can come there, they can have kids at the sliding, they can have kids at the skating rink, um, or do both. So it's, it's a nice area, it's a great area. The next thing, if we had the building there, the, the trailhead, warming house up there, it's a direct, uh, bike path to the city. When the street project is all completed, um, they can go, um, south of town on the bike trail, or they can head into, into town. So it's a nice location, a lot of opportunities for people that are using the bike path to, um, go downtown or go to Subway, South Town, Larry's, Dairy Queen, things like that. Economic developments, a lot of people coming from the outside of Pelican Rapids, bring them into our town. So that's the, that's nice to have this trailhead and warming house at this location. It will be a safe and equitable space for all people. If you look at the, the area up there, you look at the parking lot, if you look at the new building, the spacing of the skating rink, sledding hill, um, year round, it's going to be a nice, safe and equitable space for, for everyone. Restrooms will be ADA compliant, so that will be nice, um, with the restrooms. Parking lot can handle as many vehicles. With this building, there will be, um, concession stand, a larger concession stand, so let's say there's going to be a large group, a large group that's going to use the bike path and they want to have something for lunch or supper, whenever they get back, they work with the school district to set something up, use the, um, concession stand, that's, that's an option too. So some other items that we want to talk to the city about is that you're not responsible for, um, won't have to be responsible for building, you will be the general contractor. Mr. Steves will, will handle that, so you won't have to have any worries with that, with building, the building. Right now, you, the city hires and supervises the, the supervisor of the skating rink. We would, if you guys would, uh, pledge some money towards this building, we would like to take that over and run that through community education. So that means we would be in charge of the ice skating rink supervisor and deal with the issues with ice skating rink. What the city would be responsible is for setting up the skating rink, tearing it down, and then the maintenance during the, during the winter. That's what you'd be in charge of. The warming house, you wouldn't be in charge of that, we would be in charge of that, um, the supervisor that we would hire and work with, and the bathrooms, we would clean the bathrooms and maintain the building. You would not have to do any maintenance with the building. Okay? Um, on that, what we see for benefits for the county, it's a great location, great location for the trailhead, um, again, safe and equitable for all people, large parking lots, uh, the restrooms for the county, um, it's near restaurants, so people are coming back, or before they're leaving, they got places to eat at, and again, the county won't be responsible for any maintenance or anything, the school district would be responsible for that. So at this time, I'll let Mr. Steves come on up and talk about the, the building.
All right, thank you. Um, the current building runs north and south. It is a, a block building that was constructed in nineteen seventy-six, so back then it served its purpose and now, um, we have large events. Um, I don't know if you guys paid attention, this spring when we hosted section, uh, track, we had cars parked everywhere, um, and it brought a lot of people into town. And we really, really noticed that our, our restroom facilities are lacking tremendously. So this has, um, multi-use, uh, facilities in it. There are two, uh, we call them family bathrooms, neutral bathrooms, that will be open all the time during the season. They are located on the, on the south end. This building's got around east and west, so the front of it will be about up to the fence, they'd be walking through to go, go to an event. There'll be a ticket area there, then the, the next portion of it going east is, uh, two bathrooms on the south side, the warming house would be on the north side. Um, we've had questions on the proximity of the building to the rink, probably about fifty to seventy-five feet, and we would have a walk, uh, a gate they can go through to go straight north out to the rink. And that would be, uh, maintained by, by the school district, also by the, by the city guys, as far as, you know, clear enough to snow in a rink, stuff like that. Then as we move to the east, uh, there are multi-use bathrooms, each, each of them have at least eight stalls in them. We currently have two in each, so this would, would help facilitate our larger events. Those restrooms would be open on a daily basis, they would be open for larger events. If we were hosting a baseball tournament, and then obviously for track meets, football games, any, any big event, I know that there's, um, talk of groups coming through using the bike trail, if you have larger groups, they can come, you know, we would open them up, um, coordinate that with us and, um, have those readily available for those larger groups. And then if we're going to the east yet, we have a storage area, um, and then we go to the concession stand area for storage on the far east side. This building is a stick-built, a structure with, uh, steel siding, steel roof, um, it'll be very aesthetic pleasing, you know, it'll look very nice. Where if you, those of you that have been here for a while, uh, the Chauncey Martin sign that was right out by the entrance, that was removed to make that entrance wider this construction season when we redid our parking lots, that is going to go back on to or by that building for the entrance to the football field. Any questions? I went over that pretty fast, but the building is, uh, has a, the, the front of it on the west side has a fifteen-foot overhang where you, where there'll be picnic tables under it, and then you come up to the, the ticket booth like during activities. The county wanted to have that overhang for people to, when they come and go, get ready, um, just a nice sheltered area. And like Mr. Cork said, there will be, um, uh, supplies or, uh, the equipment for bike maintenance and pumps and things like that, that we have talked to, um, Brian Olson and the county about getting those and will have those in play.
Trevor, do you want to address the signage to the building?
Um, yeah, we, we have worked with the city, uh, before on signage, if you've noticed, on the, uh, on Fifth Avenue Southeast or Southwest, we have a sign up that says activity area, car field, brown soccer field, and, um, you know, it guides people where to go. Some of those are a little more difficult to find. We do the same thing out by, uh, fifty-nine, put a sign up saying, um, Chauncey Martin Athletic Complex, uh, baseball fields, softball fields, you know, track, uh, trailhead, all that stuff would be, uh, listed on there. So there again, it's another joint effort with everybody. And if you notice, the county has put up some, they call it temporary, uh, trailhead parking on the far south end of the new parking lot, kind of down by the community sign down there. Um, I think they've designated four spots. But I have been pleasantly surprised at how active that trail was and without even being publicized. Um, I would say on a daily basis, after that parking lot was, was completed enough to use, six to eight vehicles per day would be there, and if we were working up there, people would come up and ask questions, you know, where they could park and what they could use. Currently, our, our current facilities are open all the time, um, until this time of year, and then we shut them down. Within that, uh, warming house is a bathroom facility too. And that is four hundred square feet, not the bathroom, but the, uh, warming house area, and then it has a bathroom in it. So there's storage for, uh, skates and other items. So there's storage for skates and other items that the, the city recommended that we make sure we have plenty of room for.
One bathroom in the warming house, like a unisex type of deal?
Correct. And that would be the responsibility of the school district, or whoever is the, the person in charge would be in charge of maintaining that also on a daily basis, I guess. Any questions?
Trevor, what's the square footage of the building?
It is 40 feet wide, 100 feet long. About 115 feet if you take the overhang on, on the front of it. Nine foot side walls. Any other pertinent information? This would be a slab upgrade. Target date for construction would be June 1st, with completion by August 1st.
And Trevor, are their bathrooms open during the day, or will there be?
Yes.
Like on a Sunday afternoon?
Yeah, currently, we leave our, our two bathrooms up there open, you know, from time the weather gets warm enough to have water on all the time, to now, when it doesn't. So they're open all the time, and these, the new ones will be too. They will have, not the multi-use ones, I don't really dare leave a big bathroom like that open, you know, every day, all day, but the other ones will be open. Thank you.
And this would also be a benefit for those that use the tennis courts and the pickleball courts?
Yeah, the pickleball court is tremendously busy too. It's the, it's a new thing that's, you know, and you guys partnered with us a few years ago when we did that, and that has been really, really a good thing it brings on. It's so popular that you have two different groups. You have your competitive group in the morning, and you have your more laid-back group in the evening, so, so that you say. So it's really good.
Don?
Just a couple of thoughts. First of all, we need more pickleball courts. That's going to be a discussion in the future. But, you know, we've talked, the city has been talking about the bike trailhead, and, you know, I know we, we, you know, the, the council made a decision on the senior center down there, but even if we hadn't done that, I think when you weigh, say we still had that building, and you weighed the option of, of creating a trailhead there, which would have taken hundreds of thousands of dollars to do, versus just partnering with and co-op-ing with the school and the county, and the fact that the park board even saw the, the benefit of, of moving the trailhead down there. You know, there's, there's a huge savings to the city not having to worry about the trailhead side of it anymore, because now we've got someplace to go. Also, in the long run, you know, saving the city some dollars with having to staff the rink, and not, them guys taking that over again. There's also that building that's down there right now that the city has, that we're going to have to stick some, some dollars into, to do something with that building, because it's, it's in dire need of work. So, you know, that solves the trailhead conversation, it solves the need for a skating rink facility, the warming house thing, and it saves us some dollars and some staffing. I think it's a, it's, it's a, it's a good partnership to have.
Council, any questions?
Where's the skating rink going to go?
It is, are you familiar where the sliding hill is right now?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, it's in between, it's located to the east of the sliding hill. So if that big mountain of dirt that we had up there this late summer, Mount Viking, that thing was, that dirt was used to flatten out that area, and then we ended up seeding it, getting a hydro seeding it. And that created a nice space for that rink to be located in between the sledding hill and the fence for the athletic area up there.
So that rink potentially could be quite a bit bigger than the current rink, right?
Yeah, yep. I, I'm not going to speak for Brian Olson, but I, I think now it is, I'm not going to say, "Yeah, it's going to be huge." But I, it, it looks bigger than it was before, but it might be the placement of it.
And one thing about that size of the rink, the size of the rink, I think Lance might know better than I, but, because he used to help put it together, but I think is determined by that edging that goes around it. Is that correct?
Yeah, you could get more of that, and make it as big as you wanted, if you wanted.
I got a question, is there going to be like a hydrant up there or something? Is there any plans of that for flooding the rink, or are you still going to have to haul?
No, we have to haul water. But to answer your question, being that bathroom is going to be on all year, with the water now comes from the east, from Maple Drive or 10th over there, on the other side of football field. So it, it does come all the way under that field and kind of feeds into the current building. So obviously, we don't have that on during the winter. But we, that is a three-inch water pipe coming in there, and we could make provisions of, because that'll be in a heated space where that vein comes in. Because we're going to have to heat the warming house and heat those bathrooms in some of the area. The rest of it, we're not going to heat. All of it will have some heat in it, it'll all be insulated, so that'll keep it above freezing mainly. But that is a good point to bring up. We could put a larger hydrant out there that, not fire hydrant, but something that you can tie into the building, because that would then make it a lot easier that they don't have to use a truck to hold water now. I don't know if their water volume is, has to be that great, does it? I know you've done it, I haven't.
If you get a long enough hose, you can, you don't need as much pressure. I mean, but it's going to be a lot easier than trucking water up there.
Yep.
Right.
Anyone else that's your representative school have anything to add or comments?
I think just looking at, looking at the timeline, you know, when we want to, want to keep rolling here, so we would like to know from the city council of, are they going to be cooperating with us? And then if you are, how much money are you going to contribute towards, towards the building? And this is for, I think this building's going to be for a long time, so 30, 40, 50 years, way beyond us. Which is going to be a good thing for the city and the school. And we would do an MOU, making sure we, the school district, the county, and the city understand who's responsible for what, so.
Do you have a projected cost for the building?
Right around 500.
Has the county come up with any figures yet that they're willing to contribute?
Yeah, so the county, the trailheads that they've been putting up are right around 50,000 that they've been putting up. They would want to keep it right around there, because it would be hard to explain, you know, to everyone else why there was more money towards this building than the other building that they've put up, so. Their, their talk right now is right around there, and they have a board meeting coming up that they're going to discuss that. And then I talked to, to Mr. Soga about having a, we gave him a letter of intent of like how much money the city is going to be part of this, like how much money that would be, so then we would fill that out and then do an MOU.
Mr. Corff, do you want to talk about, without mentioning the amount, that this could be paid in mon, in yearly payments?
So I know in the past, when you guys, the city has contributed to the baseball lights, you did it over like five years, or something like that. So we would be open, the school district would be open to, if you make payments over a certain amount of time, we would like to have it, whatever amount it would be, we'd like to keep it within five years, no more.
Don, do you want to address that amount, which we talked to, talked about?
Well, down the road, Brian, like operating expenses, is the county going to help with that also, or?
This is like a, a one-time for you. So you're going to, with the amount of money that you're going to put towards it, that's the one time, other than what's in the MOU that you'd be responsible for. The district would be responsible for everything that we would agree to. So what we talked about, like, if you would say, "We're going to put so much money towards this," then we would come up with an MOU what that would consist of, you know? If you put, I think, a big chunk of money towards it, you look at running it through community ed, the skating rink supervisor, running that, so you guys wouldn't have to deal with that, you just have to help us set it up, tear it down, and then help us manage. Otherwise, the school district, and then, and the amount that the county gets would be a one-time, the school district would be responsible for all the maintenance of the building.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, when we talked about payments, similar to like we did with the, the baseball lights, and, you know, doing it over a five-year period, I was kind of thinking, where, where could we come, this, this money come from? Similar to the baseball lights too. You know, we don't have the liquor store facility payment anymore, which was $47,000 a, a year, or whatever it was. You know, depending on the, the amount that the city council's comfortable with, to do it over a five-year period and put 30 grand a year for five years, and come up with 150,000 through the liquor store savings and profits to pay for it? Because I think it is a, a good project, a good co-op, and it saves us money in the long run. That was just kind of my thinking. I don't know what they're thinking, but.
And there was a meeting here this past week, Superintendent Corff was there, and Commissioner Wayne Johnson, Councilman Foster, Don, and myself, and this number of 150,000 was thrown around. We didn't agree to it, or nothing is set in stone at that, at this point, but that's sort of a starting point, 150,000 dollars over five years.
Would the first, would the first one be next year, and then four more years beyond that?
Are there any grant availabilities for anything like this, that anybody is aware of, or?
I've not seen any.
No.
Mr. Martinez, our finance director's here, so.
No, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of grants. You look through the state of Minnesota, through M U, and what we're going to do is we're going to allocate some of the maintenance dollars that we get yearly for, because it falls under reconstruction. So that's what we're, we're going to use in our budgets to reconstruct this bigger building. But, you know, that's something we're going to partner up with the county, whether it is with Patrick or, or Commissioner Johnson, to see if they know of any other possibility, whether it's to improve the safety of the streets, or, or I'm sure Patrick has a few grants that has to do with providing more bike racks or whatnot. So, you know, we're open to any partnerships for, for, for the grants.
I got another question. Does the district intend to approach any of the other service organizations in town, similar like you did with the baseball lighting? And ask for donations towards this?
Yep, so I've had a, some discussions with some business owners, and, and with this building, they're saying that there's three groups that are working together, but their hope is that the three groups can cover that more money to cover that building and not ask businesses. I think the businesses are hit up enough, you know, from different organizations. Our, our businesses and Pelagrams do a great job of supporting a lot of different organizations at the school, and I'm just talking from the school, so I'm, I'm not sure other organizations outside the school, but inside the school, our businesses do a great job.
Is there any service organizations in town that would be?
You never know until you ask, right? There's several in town that are, are happy to do things that benefit the city as a whole. It's just an avenue I was curious if you've explored, that's all.
Council?
You guys want an answer tonight, right?
We'd like an answer by middle of December. We'd like to know if you're going to join the county and the school and help us build this building? And if you're not, then we would want to know that, or if you are, by the middle of December, so we can keep on moving forward with this process.
Personally, I feel very interested in joining. Dollar value, I don't know if we should just knee-jerk a dollar amount tonight, or if we should discuss it further. But if you guys attended a meeting and discussed it already, I wasn't aware of.
Well, we looked at it, the plans are not totally set yet, so.
What we do know with our planned trailhead down top, or down by the former senior citizen center, that's somewhere in the future. We don't even know when that would happen.
Right.
And we're talking probably minimum 800,000 dollars in the future. Well, this, you know, we're talking, now we're talking 150, and this could happen right now, and it.
Oh, absolutely.
It'd be a savings to the city over the long haul.
Can we, can we give them the yes, that we will be going, that we will partner with them tonight, without?
Without, without a dollar value, a dollar amount?
Yeah. Which we need. It would be nice to know that, yes, you are, then we would want to know by middle of December what that amount's going to be.
Well, I'll make a motion that we partner with the county and the school district to go ahead with this trailhead building, with further discussions on donation amount by the city.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion, second, discussion, discussion.
Personally, I think 150 is light, but.
Well, it may be, that's why I think, I think discuss, further discussion is warranted, yeah.
Discussion. Hearing not, all in favor, so you can probably say aye?
Aye.
What was it saying? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. You'll hear back from us by the middle of December. Okay, thank you. Let's go up to item number 14, 2023 utility budgets and rates. They were in your packets, and we're going to talk about the whole water and sewer rates. Don has something he's going to put on the board, we do have that in our packet, there was actually two different documents. Don, you want to speak to that, please?
First off, can we put on the next agenda then to talk about that trailhead project?
Yeah, I think we should. That's the 29th of November.
Okay. Okay, I have up on the screen the, the water budget. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of start with that one first. And this is obviously in the packets. I'll talk about the budgets first, and then I'll jump to the rates. Of course, this was, budgets were based off of meetings with the budget committee, and as far as the rates go, it was just, not just the budget committee, but it was also some discussion with West Central Turkeys too, but we'll get into that. So like I normally do, in going through the budgets, I'm going to start with the, the revenue side. I'm not going to go through every line item, just going to touch on kind of the key ones. I do try and, you know, obviously, as you're familiar with, I, I do it in Excel, so I can leave these, these comment boxes up, so you can kind of see what that line item might entail. But to start with, on the, on the water side, the, the, the total budget on the water side is 654,773. You can see that's about 106,000 dollars above what it was last year. And the reason for that is the one-time project that we just talked about. So as we go through and we talk about these budgets, the cybersecurity stuff is in these, the control system upgrade is in these, okay? Obviously, if you want to approve that stuff, we'd be having a different discussion, but... So it's, it's a, about 106,000 dollars, a one-time for the control systems, and then everything next year in 2020, going into the 2024 budget, should drop back down to the normal stuff. Again, the, the ARP funds are going to basically pay for 55,000 dollars of the water fund upgrade. The rest of the money to balance the budget is going to come out of the reserves. I've got it at 69,000 dollars. So with those, with those reserves and those ARP funds, that should balance the budget for us. Nothing really, uh, to talk about on the revenue side of things other than when you look at this sales number and you'll see this on the sewer, well, kind of on the sewer side also, uh, I dropped the 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 amount of sales down by twenty thousand. If you look at twenty twenty-one, you know, we had actuals of of four oh eight, which is substantially down from the north of five hundred thousand we normally see. Twenty twenty-two budget number is five twenty. Uh, at this point, I'm not sure we'll hit that. It might be kind of close, but the fact that it's been way down from the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, uh, budgets or actuals kind of is is related to, we would have thought that with the drought, the droughts and everything else that that we've been experiencing that people would have been using more water, but, uh, what we found in looking at the water usage, the commercial side of things and the residential side of things, uh, the the water usage in the last few years has been about the same, but the industry, which is really just West Central Turkeys, who typically uses sixty percent of the city's water, uh, they've been down in in their water usage substantially, and we talked a little bit about about that with them. Uh, you know, most of it, I think Steve could probably talk to it better than I could, but a lot of it had to do with, you know, the state of the plant, you know, the last couple of years with labor and and their working hours and that type of thing, but also they were heavily hit by the bird flu. And I don't know, Steve, if you wanna just touch on that stuff a little bit.
The bird flu is really throwing a wrench in our production. So we've had more three day weekends in twenty twenty-two than there probably have been in the last fifteen years. So it's just kind of a crazy situation right now, and then it came back. So again, we slowed down. We thought we'd be, the plan would be up in full production at this time of the year, and again, bird flu is back. They had some flocks down in the southeast part of the state that they had to destroy, so our production has not picked up the way it was planned, and this has had a big impact on the water and sewer plant because, you know, when I started in that plant, we were running six and seven days a week, just about all the time. And this year, we've had every weekend off. It's, it's been a little crazy, so how much we're down, well, that's influenced the budget and we probably spent as much time on this budget as we did on the general budget. Uh, we had several meetings on it. We've looked at, you know, we've talked about these different, uh, cybersecurity and the upgrade for the control pro- project, but we met with West Central, we've looked, we met with People Services, um, all these different, uh, groups we've met with to take a look at it and and, um. So our budget is that plan, but our plan has been kind of shot to pieces the last two years. First, we had COVID, which there was a reduction in reduction in water usage then, and then this year, there's really been an influence because of the bird flu.
Okay, so, uh, this this box over here, basically, it says twenty percent of two seventy-eight. I guess two seventy-eight is the ARP funds that we got. Um, and the twenty percent, basically, when I looked at in talking to Mayor Frazier, People Service, and then also in Control, you look at Control Systems Upgrade, the wastewater plant is a much bigger facility, has a lot more components in it that that these that are that are controlling this, uh, that the controls are basically, um, controlling that plant down there. So we figured it was about eighty percent, twenty percent split. So you'll see in this budget, we're using twenty percent of the ARP funds to cover that expense, and in the wastewater, it'll be eighty percent, okay? And then on the expense side of things, one of the things that you'll notice, I'll point out right away, is our debt service over time is obviously going up. So, uh, in twenty twenty, we budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred for our debt service, and that number actually jumps up by a hundred and thirty-six thousand or up to a hundred and thirty-six thousand in twenty twenty-three. Basically, that's kind of a result of the structure of our bonds. You know, a lot of times, we structure them so that the the principal might be lower at one point and then it increases, but at the same time, typically, you'll see the interest on those bonds also drop over a period of time too. Did drop a little bit, uh, in twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two, but it was only about a thousand bucks. Again, I'm not gonna get into a lot of these other numbers, uh, too much unless you have questions on them. Professional services, if you look at that comment box over there, we have about two thousand dollars every year that we basically, uh, uh, have in here for lab testing that we have to do. And then People Service, you guys were a part of that discussion and approving the People Service contract, uh, twenty-five percent of that contract comes out of water. And so the new number for twenty twenty-three is at two hundred and sixty-nine thousand forty-four, twenty percent of that. The, uh, as I mentioned, the, um, cyber annual fees are built into this. That's that six thousand dollars annually. And then the one time, uh, charge to, uh, to put that system in at fourteen eighteen, you'll see I got that highlighted, so next year, they can just look at that box and know that that number can be deleted out of there because it's not gonna be a, uh, a number we have again. You get down to the facility, the out, uh, the outlay or the capital outlay for the facility itself, again, there's a twenty percent of that, three fifty-seven. The water tower that we talked about, um, that's built into this so that we have it for next year. And then in the water side of things, we always have a fifteen thousand dollars that we put in there in case we have to pull a well of the five wells. You don't have to necessarily do it every year, but People Service kind of monitors the, you know, the readings from the well and takes some measurements, static levels and stuff like that, and they kind of have an idea of when one has to re- be rehabbed. And so if that happens, it's about, I don't even know if fifteen thousand would cover anymore, but, um, uh, close to that. So that's why we have that in there. And then this other box under pensions, pensions isn't normally eight, almost nine thousand dollars, but part of the water and sewer is covering that one time cost of of, uh, the payout of my sick time due to retirement. So I just thought I'd point that out on that too. And then just continuing down through the the budget, one of the things that I've noticed, our credit card services expense is is really, really skyrocketing. The actuals in twenty twenty-one were almost six thousand dollars, uh, which were, you know, I wasn't looking at those numbers, uh, I guess, close enough, but, you know, in twenty twenty-two, we budgeted twenty-five hundred, and then all of a sudden, I'm seeing that we're gonna blow that budget easily. So in twenty twenty-three, uh, I'm increasing that number up to six thousand, and I think it's just a function of we got people paying, uh, more by credit card than we ever have before. Uh, is that credit card service expenses, is that, there isn't anything related to the paying online, is there through the through the website? Is that in here also? So there's a lot of people now that we've got that online payment set up, there's expenses that get thrown into here, and I think that's one reason why, you know, you know, we didn't know when when we got that online payment set up, how how popular that was gonna be, but it's obviously people are starting to use credit cards in the online payment system, and it's reflected in our need to increase that that expense category dramatically. On the reduction side of things, though, professional services I dropped down. That was kind of a result of having conversations with with Apex Engineering. We had some dollars in there for them guys, uh, collecting data, uh, for our GIS system and all that, and so we've kind of got a good handle on where that process is at. I have a little bit in here for, um, the licensees licensing fees. Uh, you'll see that both in water and sewer, but the annual licensing fees for that GIS data, and then a little bit of of, uh, dollars in there, um, another five hundred bucks, basically, water and sewer, uh, to to just continue the collection as we go through the year, as things happen, especially especially getting ready for the twenty twenty-four project. I think they pretty much got all the hydrants done and the curb stops and that stuff, but anytime there's changes that need to be made, Apex does it. And then the important thing is that the, uh, system is used, and that's one of the things that we talked to to Brian about, and I know when when Lance was in the street department, we had that that, uh, tremble, and you guys were, you learn how to use that tremble and the collective data on the tremble. Well, the the tremble is basically old news now, because where all that information is going is it's going to an Esri site, it's getting all put on there, and then our guys are gonna be able to typically Brian with his iPad, but he takes his iPad now, and he's able to just go to that website, log into that website, and basically pull all of our information that's been uploaded, uh, into that GIS system. So that kind of gets it more automated and the fact that they can go anywhere and not have to, uh, and even that with that iPad and in that system, they're able to basically locate things using that. Uh, and then part of this syst- part of this licensing too is to basically give us a more more accurate, uh, instead of maybe three meters, it might be one meter of accuracy on it too, so. So that's what's, uh, in there. And then as far as the the capital items for the year, which is this twenty-four thousand three hundred, you know, we buy meters every year. We we, uh, uh, spend about sixty-five hundred dollars in water and then sewer because both the meters that we buy and put in are basically used to determine the the utility bills for both utilities. The one thing that we're gonna do this year, though, because of the fact that we have this one time project going on, is, you know, typically, Brian will spend thirteen thousand dollars or try to spend thirteen thousand dollars throughout the year on meters, but because of our one time expense in upgrading, uh, the system, I'll be talking to him about only buy the meters that you have to get. Don't spend thirteen thousand just because thirteen thousand's on in the budget. We've got that in there because that's what we, you know, we may need to do, but if you can get by with spending five or six thousand on meters, then just do that. Only get them if you have to have, because that'll help, uh, put a little bit of less pressure on the budget. We also, Council already approved this Neptune data collector. That was the upgrade of that system that we needed to do. We're gonna buy, uh, uh, through metal detectors so that there's a metal detector in each vehicle. The one that they have is pretty outdated and old, so, uh, we're gonna buy some, uh, three of them. They're not that expensive. His, that's what his request was, and so that, uh, the guys don't have to go chasing each other down to get a metal detector to locate things when they need to do it, they can just jump out of the truck and do it. We're gonna reshingle the, uh, lagoon shelter. What's that doing in there? That shouldn't be in there. I'll have to look at that. Oh, yeah, maybe that is on there. And then, uh, Brian's gonna replace two hydrants, Iowa hydrants for ten grand. So the overall budget, six fifty-four seven seven three. Any questions about it? None?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three water budget.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Carry on, all in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Onto the sewer budget. The same thing with the sales. I kept the number in sales the same because, um, looking at this year, it almost looked like we're gonna possibly hit our target of of five point five two five, but, um, so I I kept it the same in really for that reason and the reason that, you know, it's one way I try and balance the budget. I always want to make sure that we go into the new year with a balanced budget. If we don't hit the sales, then it just means that if we need to, if everything else stays the same in the budget as far as what we anticipate costs are gonna be, we're just gonna have to take more money, uh, out of our our investments or our reserves to cover the budget shortfall, if there is one. But I always want to use, balance it anyway. For ARP funds on that one time project, it'll be two hundred and twenty-three thousand, and then we'll take a hundred and eighty-seven thousand out of our reserves to do it. That's eighty percent of that two seventy-eight as I talked about. Now, this basically means that the sewer budget's gonna go up by approximately three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from one point six million to one point nine three in twenty twenty-three, okay? After twenty twenty-three, we've got that project out of the way, the budget will drop back down by about three hundred thousand dollars, or should. I'm not, there really isn't too much to talk about on the rest of this page. When you get into expenses, it's just the the council and the mayor's expense numbers, and they really haven't changed much at all. Going to page two, uh, the debt service, again, you see some change in the in the debt service numbers maybe going up, uh, when it talks about the principal, a little bit for the phosphorus project goes from three hundred and twelve thousand to three hundred and sixteen thousand. The, uh, upgrade that we did after that goes from three sixty-one to three sixty-eight, so you see some some change there. But the interest payments, uh, for phosphorus dropped by four thousand dollars, and, um, so there's a little bit of drop in interest payments on each one of those projects to offset that increase to some extent. Going down to the collection system side of things, uh, we do have it, I probably maybe would have pointed it out and or should have pointed it out in in water also, but you might have seen some, a little bit of difference or, uh, uh, tick up in the wages, obviously, because of the colas and stuff, the colo adjustments. That, other than that, the typical stuff that we typically see in education, operating supplies, that type of thing. Um, looking at the past histories and stuff, I tried to, if there needed to be a little bit of an increase, I would increase it. If there seemed to be where we could afford dropping it down a hair, I would do that too, just to try and make the budget as efficient as possible. Uh, professional services is one area that, again, is reflection of, there was a, you know, five thousand yard drop pretty much, just because of the fact that we've got that GIS stuff figured out, and I was able to take a few things out of that that used to be in there because the data collection part of it has kind of come down to a minimum now. The capital outlay for the collection side, which is the the sewer, uh, sewer mains, basically, you see that half of the thirteen thousand for meters, and then the and then the Neptune, uh, update the Neptune reader. So those are the only two things that we're gonna do on the collection side there, and like I said before, we'll try and monitor, you know, kind of watch how many meters we buy, um, this year anyway, because of that one time project. On the wastewater treatment side, um, you know, again, there's lab work that we pay for. We got about a thousand bucks in in there that we do every year. One of the things that's new in this budget is this PFOS testing. If you recall, conversations that we had about PFOS testing, the city had approved recently, the council had approved that memorandum of understanding with the MPCA that the city will basically be collecting and submitting, um, uh, taking samples for PFOS and then and then submitting those that information to the MPCA. That testing is gonna is, right now, falls on our shoulders, and it's gonna be for a testing period about six thousand dollars. We are hoping that the PFA basically ends up getting funding from the legislature to cover that cost. So if that happens and we don't have to spend it, great, we just save six thousand dollars. Otherwise, it's gonna be on the city. Then out of the, uh, treatment side of things, fifty-five percent of the People Service annual costs will come out of the treatment side. There's the cybersecurity, eighty percent of that cybersecurity, six thousand is in here, and then the one time fourteen eighty eighteen to put the cybersecurity system in, twenty twenty-four, that. 2024, that can be deleted out. In the capital side of the treatment, we're going to have the 80% of the SCADA upgrade. And these other boxes, this next box that you see for the lagoon stuff, really that's just, with the people's service contract, I've mentioned this before, but what we do is that contractor, there's a certain percentage of it that people's service also, based on the overall contract, it was 269 or whatever it is, there's a percentage of that that they kind of allocate towards maintenance costs. So anything that goes on down there and operating the plant that's just general maintenance stuff, they pay for up to a certain dollar amount. And you see it in your report from people's service every month. You know, how much of that maintenance budget's been used up? You know, what percentage of it, dollars and percentages. And so that's just what this note is. This next one down is $500 is just something I put in there. But this is where, if we get over that, say that maintenance budget that people's service covers is $18,000, this is probably pretty close to where it's at next year. If them expenses go to $20,000, well, at the end of the year, the city sends people's service a $2,000 check because it went over. If the maintenance budget comes in at $16,000, people's service sends the city a check for that $2,000 difference. So that's kind of the way that is handled. I just put 5,000 in there just to have something in there. I don't anticipate, you never know because something hiccups at the wastewater plant it could cost several thousands of dollars. But I don't anticipate in 2023, because of the new numbers for the maintenance percentage, I don't anticipate we'll go over. If standard operating goes on and nothing major happens, we'll be okay. And then in the lagoon, there's also 10% of people's service that goes into the lagoon. And then there's a $3,000 that we pay for groundwater monitoring at the lagoon. All the lagoon expenses basically get rolled into the base rate that West Central Turkeys pays. So when we start talking about the rate structures and stuff, you're going to see some, we'll have some discussion about the base rate for West Central Turkeys. Well, this number's kind of in that. So whenever you see lagoon operating costs, yeah, we pay them upfront, but it's built into West Central Turkey's rate structure because the lagoon is there for one purpose and one purpose only is to pretreat the wastewater, the waste from West Central Turkeys, not the community. So they cover 100% of our costs. Then you get down to sludge. Sludge is 10% of people's service. We attribute that to the sludge area. And then also the R and M service of the sludge is basically sludge hauling. Whenever we hire to have the sludge taken out of the big tank and spread on the fields, there's a cost to that and I'm budgeting 55,000 for it. Last year it was 50, the year before that, the actual was 64. It's really determined on how much sludge we produce. And we have all the hope in the world that the bugs that we're adding to the system now through Team Labs is going to create a situation in which we can drop that number. I do know that Wayne Johnson, Super Septic, hauled for us this year. And we were really anxiously looking to see was the amount that he had to haul less than 2021 or more than 2021. Unfortunately, it might be a bad year to kind of compare that stuff because there was something that went on down at the wastewater plant, partly I think due to that glitch in the system, the computer dying and stuff. But we ended up having, the guys ended up having to, because they didn't have the automation to do it, we ended up having to transfer through pumps or whatever hoses, transfer stuff from some of the areas down there into the tank. So it was more added to the tank that normally wouldn't have been there in a normal year. So we'll see. But I know that Team Labs is doing an evaluation and using Pelican Rapids as a pilot, a model. And so they're going to be doing some testing and checking too. And hopefully sometime in November or December or, I'm surprised we haven't heard from them, but they're going to come to the city council and give you an evaluation of how effective these bugs have been out there, out there at the wastewater plant when we started dosing the plant with them. So. And then the last number that I'm going to point out is our operating supplies, which is basically our feric that we use to extract the phosphorus out of our affluent. I increased that $10,000, even though the $2021 we're only at, 77,000 actual. I increased it to 90 because, you know, we're hearing that the chemicals like feric and stuff from Hawkins where we buy it, the inflation has drove them numbers substantially higher than what they've ever been. So just to be on the safe side, I put that number up a little bit. And feric is really the only thing that we can use. It's the cheapest option of chemical to use to pull the phosphorus out of our affluent. We used to use something else, but we switched to feric because it was cheaper. And the guys, operators, people's service, they constantly are looking at, you know, how much we're using and trying to tweak it to the best they can to use less chemical and still be able to stay within our permit taking phosphorus solid. We've been able to do it and they've been doing a good job with it so far. So again, the sewer budget goes up by about $300,000. Any question on that? If not, or if you have any questions after the meeting too, you know, feel free to get ahold of me. But no questions, I recommend that we approve the budget.
A move to approve the sewer budget.
Is there a second? I have a second. Discussion. 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 Carry now, all in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Now the rates.
Now the rates. And again, the reason for the rates, adjustment to the rates, our lower water usage, which basically unfortunately our water usage dictates our revenues. And then also looking at the rates, it's kind of in preparation for the 2024 debt service. Because our fund balances right now in our water and sewer, that's another reason why we're looking at the rates. Our fund balances, we like to have a certain amount of money in fund balances just in case something happens. In the water side of things, we like to have always on hand at least $50,000. In the sewer side, it's $100,000 just because it's a bigger plant and it's a lot more expensive should something happen. So that's our goal is to maintain them fund balances. We're not, we haven't been able to keep them fund balances because our revenues haven't been as strong because industry's not using as much water as they used to. And Steve explained the reasons why that is. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, see if you can change the battery in that or just move it. I don't want to do that.
One of the things about the water and sewer budget, I mean, we've looked at what the plan is for 2023. But because of the debt service and everything else that we've got in that, it's really at least five to 10 years out we're looking at. And when you, Don gets the figures up there, you're kind of going to see that because he's got a graph that kind of goes like this. And that's where we have to be to maintain our budgets with the reserves that we require to hold.
Okay. So if you, if you recall last year.
If you can see that.
Here we go. All right, we got mouse. So if you recall last year, I shared with you this software. It's a third-party software thing that was developed by, I don't know, University of Virginia or something. And I found, over the years, I've tried different things, different approaches to try and estimate what our rates need to be. And when I found this, it seems to work the best. And what I like about it is the graphs you're going to see because it really shows you graphically where we're at and what happens with the different rates that we adjust to. So this is for the water. And basically in 2022, it shows us in, you know, current year and then the next five years. In the water side of things, currently we have a $15.81 base rate. The 81 cents is the state requirement. So our base rate's really 15 bucks. And then currently, the flow rate is $2.75 per thousand. And our rate structure, water, our residential, commercial and industrial is all the same, 2.75 per thousand. Some cities do it differently depending on if it's residential. We don't. So what we're looking at for 2023, to try and get ready for 2024 project, to try and build up our fund balances again, we're proposing a $1 per thousand increase to go from 275 to 375. And then in 2024, we will stay at the 375, no increase. But then in five, six and seven, we're going to increase it 25 cents each of them three years. When you think about it going up by a dollar per thousand, you think, wow, what effect does that have on everybody? Well, basically, we know that the average in Pelican Rapids for residential is 6,000 gallons a month. That's the average. A lot of them are lower than that, some are higher than that. On a $6,000 or a 6,000 gallon usage, that raises the water by nine, well, water and sewer is going to be $9 a month. That's all it'll be. Basically at a dollar per thousand, if you use 6,000 gallons, it's going to be six bucks for water. On the sewer side, when we look at that, it'll be another $3 a month. The one that gets, that takes the biggest hit from all this is West Central Turkeys. And that's why we called West Central Turkeys in and we sat down with them last week and I showed them these exact numbers. And of course, you know, they're concerned about it because they use 60% of our water. They use millions of gallons a month. So you can see what effect that'll have on them. So in this software again, I'll just kind of show you. I'm able to set the rate structures here. I can go to look up in our utility billing and see how much monthly volume we use for residential, how much we use for commercial, plug them numbers in, how much we use for industrial. There's the number, 7 million gallons is what West Central Turkey uses a month. So once you put those things in, I can also go over, and there's some other parameters I can set in here. You know, how many residential accounts we have, meters we have, how many commercial and how many industrial. We have two industrial, but really they're both West Central Turkeys, which makes it a little bit easier. These other growth rates, I don't put anything into these. Uncollected bills, I put maybe 1% in just to have something in there. Although West Central Turkeys, I have nothing because they always pay their bill. Down here, you can, this is calculated by the software, but this is basically saying based on our usage, the average accounts used about for residential is 5,900. We set 6,000 about. Commercial is about 10,500. Well, they could, if you're a 10,000 gallon user, just figure out 10 times, you know, a buck, it'd be $10 more a month. And then West Central Turkeys on average uses 3.6 million gallons. Okay? Then I can go back to the second page here and I can put in the actual budgets. So this is the 2022 budget. This is water now. 2023 budget, if you remember, it was 654.773. And then 2024, what I did for the rates of things is going beyond 2024 and beyond, I took and added 3% to the normal operating for inflation. I'm using 3%. It's been higher than that, obviously, but I'm using 3% each year. I'm putting in the actual debt service because we know what our debt service is going to be up, you know, until we get this new project. And then I added, you see, I added 150,000 to this. I did the same thing on the sewer side. So that would say I'm estimating a $300,000 debt payment in water and sewer for the 2024 project and beyond. I'm just splitting it 50/50 until we get the numbers and we get more information and we know from our engineers when we start getting the bids in. And the engineers work at trying to figure out more of an accurate percentage, how much really of our $8 million is water related, how much is sewer related, until we have that number. Then we can punch that in here. But right now, I'm just using 50/50. So in the $300,000 debt service payment, I'm just estimating based on the fact that the other projects that we've done at the wastewater plant that were above $7 million produced over a $300,000 debt service payment for it. So I'm just pulling that number out of the year for now. It's something going forward. If the city continues to use this as kind of their modeling for rates, these numbers could be looked at and they should be looked at every year and changed every year. So that's kind of what I'm doing going forward. You know, you kind of see this 150 going out. I don't put any additional expenses that grow every year in here. Really, you can do that if you want to be that accurate. But I'm catching all the expenses in the debt service and other known annual expenses. I'm putting the operating and all of that. So I don't use this. I don't use up, build up reserves. But one of the things that I do do for the water side, I mentioned, we'd like to have a year-ending balance always at $50,000 or higher. So you can put that number in here. It'll basically show you on the graphing of it. And then what I do too is I take last year's for 2024 or 2021, I take the fund balance, whatever it is in all of our water funds at December 31st or January 1st, and I plug that in here. So we know where we're starting and we want to keep $50,000. How does all that play out in this? Once you have all that information in here, then you can basically go to the graphs. And it's pretty nice the way this shows you. Ignore 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. For some reason, this software doesn't allow you to change those, even though in all the other places I can put in 20, you know, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26. This really is, 2016 is really 2022. 17 is 20, take that back. 16 is actually 2023. 17 is 24, 25, 26, 27. Okay? So what this basically, this first graph is showing you is, you know, based on where our rates are, what we'd like them to be in 2023, are we catching up to where we need to be so that our expenses are catching, are equal to our revenues? And it's showing it's not. And then it even gets worse in 2024 because we're just starting to try and play catch-up now based on, you know, our expenses and projected revenues. But you see, over the next few years, it starts coming back in line. So when you go over to the chart, this is kind of what it's showing, all this stuff graphically. This first one, and I'm going to go down to this one because one thing, it's bigger. Our current rate structure basically is this line right here. So this is our existing. So it shows if we don't do anything with rates, by the end of, or probably the fourth quarter of 2023, we basically now went below our $50,000 threshold that we'd like to maintain. But more importantly, first quarter of 2024, we actually have nothing left. We're south of zero. With the, and this dotted line, obviously you didn't catch that, that represents the $50,000 that we'd like to always maintain. Well, with the rate increases that we're proposing, that's what this thicker line, solid line is here. It shows that those rate increases, we actually stay above our $50,000 threshold. We actually maintain that pretty good going out through 2027. If you drop back out here, up to this chart here, it shows we continue to start going down as we get out to 2029, 2030. But it still looks like it kind of stays right at or above that $50,000 figure. Then eventually it starts going back up. Well, of course, when it starts going back up in 2020, 30, we'll have a better idea of what our debt Well, of course, when it starts going back up in twenty twenty, thirty, we'll have a better idea of what our debt service is because of the project. And we know that too, once the fund balances get out this far, things are going to change over the years. But should things stay relatively similar to what we're thinking here, this would suggest that when we get out that far, we could look at actually reducing rates. That never happens, but that's what that would suggest sometime you'd be able to do that. And then this one, this, this graph here, I'll go down to this one first. This graph, what it says is what percent of expenses are being covered by the revenues that you project? So you can see that we're above, our expenses do not cover a hundred percent, or our revenues do not cover a hundred percent of our expenses. In fact, it drops down by the end of twenty-four. The revenues that were, were, with the rate changes shows that we're going to probably be about that upper eighty percent, which is what that other chart showed you, that there's a gap between what we need and where we're going to be at. But then in 2024, it starts kind of rising back up to the point where by 2027, pretty much, if everything stays, you know, the same as what we project, we'll be back up to collecting a hundred percent of, of the expenses through our revenues. Okay? And then this just shows that same chart right here, but it actually, you know, continues to get a little better, a little better until finally in 2030, we're over a hundred percent. But again, when you get out that far, it's just, it's just throwing stuff at you because you don't know what it's going to be out there. So, you know, going back to what we're looking at for the, for the rate structures for, for water anyway, we're proposing a dollar rate, a dollar an hour, a dollar per thousand, and then hold it a year just because the lines are looking better for us. Hold it a year and then, then look at twenty-five cents. We showed the same stuff to West Central Turkeys, like I said, when we met with them last week. And they're concerned about it, but, you know, they didn't, they didn't lock out the door stomping either. They know the rates and they always tell us that our rates are high for, for them, higher in Pelican than they are anywhere in the country. I don't know, you know, how they look at it, but I know that in all of their facilities in Minnesota, on a monthly basis, we are not the highest of what they pay. Other facilities in Wilmer and other places pay substantially more per month. But I don't know if they're looking at it on a per gallon basis or what. So the way they're looking at it, they very well could be true in their statement. But the way I'm looking at it, based on dollars paid per month, we're not the highest. But anyway.
Don, do you want to restate your proposal?
So the proposal and the recommendation from us is to increase the rates for 2023. And I'm only going to go 2023 even though we show more. But for 2023, the per thousand for water goes from two seventy-five up to three seventy-five. And what'll happen is if the council is fine with this, Danielle will actually have a resolution, I believe, we're not doing it by ordinance, but a resolution that, are you going to have them act on it next meeting?
Yeah.
So at next meeting, we'll have the actual resolution that you guys will approve. But approving this tonight or making a motion on it tonight at least gives Danielle the go-ahead to put it in the resolution form. And, and her resolution will have the water and the sewer rate structures at the next meeting.
Go ahead, motion.
I'll move in.
Good.
Increase rate by one dollar per thousand gallons.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion.
That's for 2023.
Correct. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signature by saying aye?
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried.
Okay. And then I'm not going to take as much time on the sewer because you know how it all plays out. Most of the stuff is the same. Again, though, I'm trying to maintain a hundred thousand dollars on the sewer side. So in 2023, what we're proposing here, our base rate will stay the same. The flow rate for sewer will go from three thirty-five up to three eighty-five, so we're increasing it fifty cents. And it stays, it's the same residential, commercial, but not industrial. The base rate for industrial basically is this number right here. So currently, West Central Turkeys is paying seventy-five thousand dollars a month as a base rate. The rest of the community is paying fifteen dollars. But because of our fund balances, because of, you know, cost of everything these days, and because of the, the debt service, and there's, there's more to looking at, which we share with West Central Turkeys, how we come up with their base rate. It's a combination of our operating costs and the percent that we, that we pass on to them for the whole plant. It's a, in that, in that base rate, we, we use the phosphorus project debt service, which is over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, ninety-two percent is theirs. So we pass, we, we basically pass that on to them through the base rate. The overall, overall plant upgrade that we did, we attributed to West Central Turkeys. I think it was sixty-two percent of that. And so that's in this rate. So seventy-five thousand is what their base rate is set at. And when I went through and I looked at all of the, the years going forward, all through twenty thirty-something, till all of our debt services paid off at this point, except for the 2024 project. When all of it's paid off, then basically, West Central Turkey would, would potentially drop down. But after all them, after all the years through twenty thirty, whatever, thirty-nine, thirty-seven, the average is thirty, is seventy-five thousand. But when you look at it throughout the whole lifespan of our debt, it's seventy-five thousand. But for, for us to continue to collect seventy-five thousand from us does not help our shortfalls in our funds. And so that's what we explained to them. If, so I took in, and I took, I took it in blocks. And I looked at where we, where we are in 2022. And the next five years, I looked at what their averages would be with the debt service that we have, that were used for this, this base rate for them. I looked at the next five years and I saw, we could be charging them eighty-eight thousand or eighty-six thousand instead of seventy-five. And then after that, when you get to 2028 or whatever, that next chunk through the end, it could drop down to ba, the average at that point is about sixty-six thousand. So what I told, what we told them was because of our shortfalls and everything else, we're going to increase their base rate in 2023 from seventy-five thousand to eighty-one thousand. Again, we could go higher. But because it's November and because, you know, they probably already got their budget set, we thought, okay, well, let's just jump it up six thousand dollars. But then in 2024, it's going up another seven thousand. This could be looked at because it's potential, potentially it could be come down a little bit, but, you know, we're, we're suggesting right now eighty-eight thousand a month. So it's going to go up another seven thousand in 2024 and then it'll stay at eighty-eight thousand through the remainder of, through 2027. And 2027 is when the phosphorus project last debt service payment is, which means we have a four hundred, three hundred and eighty thousand or three hundred and sixty thousand dollar debt service payment that falls off. We have, no longer have it. When that happens, there's no reason to keep West Central Turkeys at eighty-eight thousand dollars. However, they realize and we realize there's going to be new debt added, and that's the 2024 project. So that's going to all have to be figured into the mix beyond 2027. But they understand where we're going with, with these numbers. Again, you know, they don't like them, we don't like any increases, but this is what it has to be. Again, I put the budgets in here for the sake of the one-time project that we're going to be doing down there. There's the, the three hundred thousand dollar increase. And then going in 2024, in 2024, I tried to take that, that increase out, but we also have three percent built in for, you know, yearly inflationary increases, plus the debt service that, that we'll still have in 2024, which is this eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar number. And then I add in a hundred and fifty thousand for debt service for the 2024 project. So doing that, this is kind of how the graph looked then. This one's not as bad as the, as the water looked. Based on that, again, increasing West Central Turkeys by seven thousand dollars or six thousand dollars one year, and then basically another seven thousand dollars a month, basically really closes the gap. And that's what the graph shows here. This one, this one here first, basically, this dotted dash line is the hundred thousand dollar that we'd like to maintain. This is where our current rate structure puts us. In fact, we're below, we're below zero by the time we just get started into twenty-three. January twenty twenty-three, we're already, fund balances are below zero. And we don't want that to happen. So with the rate increases we're projecting, you see us staying above that, you know, right around that hundred thousand dollar balance until we get out to 2027. And that pretty much is because of what we're doing to West Central Turkeys. If, if it was just the fifty cent rate that we're doing for everybody else on the flows, we would never be able to keep it at fifty cents. So, and then when you get out here at 2029, you see that the, 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 kind of the debt, maybe it is 2029 that the last phosphorus payment is. You can all of a sudden see this thing just goes crazy in a positive direction. That's because we got rid of that three hundred thousand dollar plus debt service payment. And then over here, basically, for 2023, you know, the revenues that we're going to be collecting at going to eighty-one thousand dollars, basically gets us going in a positive direction as far as our, our revenues collected meeting our hundred percent of our expenses. But once we get to 2024 and beyond, we're pretty close to that hundred thousand dollars. Or not hundred thousand dollars, that hundred percent of collecting what we need to meet all of our expenses. So with that, our recommendation would be then to increase the, the flow rate per thousand for 2023 from three thirty-five to three eighty-five. And the base rate to West Central Turkey is going from seventy-five thousand a month to eighty-one thousand a month.
Go ahead, motion?
I note that we approved the rate increase for the sewer.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signature by the same aye?
Wait a second here. One of the things that Don didn't mention is we're assuming that the consumption or the usage is going to at least stay the same. If it goes back up, it'll improve. But if it continues to go down, then we're going to have another problem in a year or two.
And one of the reasons it went down was because of obviously the bird flu and everything else. If we can start getting back to normal at the plant, that'll, that'll help out all this dramatically.
One of the reasons we're in this situation now is because the last year, it's gone down so much.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature by the same aye?
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried. Wasn't that fun?
Yeah. Let me just, look quickly on this. You know, that, that, that rate study that we do, that survey that we involved in, this is the chart that comes out of that. These are all Minnesota cities. Pelican Rapids with our current rate structure, if you look at what everybody else pays for water and sewer for six thousand gallons a month, Pelican's way down here in this lower.
Third, or fourth.
Fourth, yeah, maybe even fifth. With that rate increase, we only move up. Residentially, we only move up to this point in this whole scale thing. So we're still dramatically lower. Our utility rates are dramatically less than many, many cities in the state of Minnesota.
We move up on that scale, but we don't know what those other cities are doing. They're probably raising theirs also, so.
And if you look at that study, it does talk about planned rate increases in there too. So I just wanted to show that since I had it.
Okay, thank you. Luke can get that, you can get that later, Luke, from Don, because that's very interesting.
Very important for the city, city to understand that, yes, our rates are going up, but we're still lower than many.
And for anybody that wants to know, what does it mean for me? Just look at how much you use a month. For every thousand, it's a dollar fifty. Increase.
Okay, let's move on. Item number sixteen, personnel policy update, which may include a resolution 2022-21 approval for an update to City of Pelican Rapids City Code Part Eight Personnel Policy. There is one in your packet.
I'm going to, I'm going to try and do the short version of this. There was, I'm going to start here first. On page eighty-one in the packet, there was a resolution. And the resolution is the clean version of what I'm going to go back to. But the only thing I want to say about this, I wanted to point out to you was the resolution should have been the clean version of everything. And it was on every page except for this first page. I don't know how I missed this, but you see the, the word inconsistent with crossed out and the word contradictory there. That's what the clean version should have looked like. But the rest of this whole, the whole resolution is the clean version of it, okay? So kind of, when you look at the resolution, ignore that. We're going to take that page out and put a, a clean page in. But I'll go back to this version, which is the first version, it says showing edits. And again, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it other than to say, when you go through this version, you're going to see what's crossed out and what's not crossed out is what the new language is. The biggest thing and the reason for this, this change that we're going through, and there's a bunch of it in here, is because we've talked about, about some changes that, well, one, one case was changes that the council had already made as we were talking about the, probably maybe the prior union negotiations. We added the immediate family definition, we changed to include grandparents. Well, that change wasn't put in the, the policy yet here. It was enacted and you, and we were practicing it because you guys approved it and it was in the union contract, but it hadn't been put into this yet. So there was other things like that. The other thing is throughout all these, all these changes in here, it was a, a matter of discussions with our labor attorneys that we use. And, and their review, they went through and reviewed all of our, our personnel policy and they made a lot of the suggested changes in here because of state law changes. When it, when it, especially as it relates to maternity and, you know, parental leave. So there's a section in here that, that was revised to reflect the state law that we have to follow. The biggest change to this was the fact that the Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA. And when I first started, I was told that the city had to follow FMLA. And there was an FMLA policy that was put together. Well, through recent events, and I'll say recent, I'll say within the last couple of years, and we're still dealing with it, we found a glitch in that system, FMLA, and the way that it could be used, not in the city's favor. And so I got to thinking about whether if, you know, and I had heard through league events and everything else that we don't necessarily have to have and follow FMLA. So I talked to the labor attorneys about this and found that because we do not have fifty employees, we do not have to have an FMLA policy. So with the recommendation from our labor attorneys, they suggested and recommended we remove it. We still have state law that relates to medical leave, Minnesota, you know, State Medical Leave Act. We have to follow. So that's regardless of FMLA. FMLA is a federal thing. So they suggested we take it out. So that's removed out. And when you go through the, the draft of this, I think you probably get down to pages twelve through whatever, all this green Xed out here, this is the FMLA section of the personnel policy being removed. And then since some of it was being removed, that might have dealt with how we, and it might not have been very clear on it either, but how we dealt with. and it might not have been very clear on it either, but how we dealt with medical health insurances, not just from, not health, necessarily just health insurance, but insurances in general. Some employees, um, have AFLAC, some don't. Some have dental insurance, some don't. How do we deal with those, um, in our policy when they're taking a leave of absence? That type of thing. Well, FMLA might have had something to do with that. State law in Minnesota has something to do with that. But to be more clear and, and specific on how we're going to handle those situations and stay consistent in the way we've been practicing doing those situations, we found that let's get it in here also. So there are some sections in here that deal with, with, um, leaves without pay, which we still would allow. But when, when, when employees ask for that, how do we deal with, okay, they're going to take, they're going, they, they, they're going to, they're going to be gone for a period of time and they can't pay, they can't stay in pay status, which means they don't have enough comp time or sick leave to cover them being gone or vacation. Could also be a reason. They don't have enough to cover being in pay status. So they're not going to get a full, give us a full 80 hours being covered by, you know, sick leave or vacation. So how do we deal with situations where they can't pay, stay in pay status and still, um, you know, uh, deal with these insurances? And so the language in, in this thing, dealing with that, from that perspective, is clarified. And it's the way we've been kind of handling it, but we wanted to have it in the policy so that it's, we can, it's allowed you to stay consistent, especially going through, you know, different administrators and employees and stuff, not so we're practicing all the same. So that's what a lot of it has to deal with. So if you'd like me to, I can go page by page. But that's why I provided you the red line version too, in case you were reading through it and had any questions. But, you know, this is, uh, um, after, after discussions with Danielle about it, after discussions with, with Flaherty and Hood, the labor attorneys about it, this is our recommendation as a clean new personnel policy that really lines up with making sure that it's not contradicting with, with the, the union contract or any other policies the city has. That's one reason for the change on the first praise, uh, first page, just to make sure we're not being conflicted or conflicting or anything else. It's, it's really, if the union contract addresses it, this is secondary. If it doesn't address it, this is primary. So, uh, that's kind of the way we've always been doing it. That's the way it's worded here and in the union contract. So any questions? Do you want me to go in detail on any section of it? If not, we recommend you guys approve it.
Approve the resolution?
Approve the resolution, yeah, 2022-21.
Do we hear a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Before you do that.
Well, let's, is there a second so we can discuss it?
Sure. No second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion?
I think we ought to postpone this for a month so we can take a look at it.
Well, it won't be a month.
It won't be a month. We don't have a meeting in a month. Unless we have a meeting in December, second meeting in December.
Well, don't we have another meeting in November?
We have another, yeah, yeah. End of this month. Or the 13th of December.
Oh, we have a meeting in the middle of December.
If you want to, and that's fine. If you want to take a look, have more time looking through it, that's fine. If you want to postpone it or talk about it, don't wait a month. Let's do it at the next meeting in case you want to do it at a third meeting because.
27th.
Otherwise, I'm gone. I've got two meetings left. I'm just putting that out there because if you wait till the last one and then there's a question.
In saying that, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, I'll move that we postpone this till the 27th of November.
29th, I believe, right?
29th, yeah.
Oh, I'm in the wrong month. 29th.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion?
The only discussion for me would be, please, when you're looking at the edited version of this, call me if you have questions on it.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number 17, administrator report, Don.
Since the last meeting, basically working with Danielle to get all this stuff put together and get it out to you guys and prep for the meeting. Held 2023 utility budget rate meetings with Danielle and the budget committee as well as West Central Turkeys. Met with the swimming pool committee to discuss the state of the swimming pool project. That's going to be on the next meeting agenda also. I also attended the October 2nd city administrator interviews meeting, you know, as part of the department heads, uh, interview process. I attended the dam removal project pre-bid letting meeting, where we basically got together before the bids. Contractors could come in, take a look at the project. The engineer was, the engineer was here, kind of explain, answer any questions. And then all the potential bidders actually went out to the site, the dam site, and looked at everything and, and, you know, had more questions answered, I guess. There was a bid opening, which I also attended. And that will be presented to the council at the next meeting also. What the bids came in at, et cetera.
Was DNR there when they went to look at the dam?
Yes, there was a representative from the DNR here for that. There wasn't one here for the bid opening, but they didn't necessarily need to be.
Yeah, okay.
I attended the special meeting to discuss the senior center sale. I facilitated the, the meeting within control. The mayor and councilman Foster to look at the SCADA project and go through them proposals. I attended warming house meetings, plural, with the county, school staff, street superintendent and the mayor. And, you know, kind of along them lines too. Those meetings and discussions we've had were just the concept. I mean, we weren't committing to nothing or nothing. It was just the concept of it all. Met with the city attorney to discuss the senior center agreements and the finances from the perspective of, you know, we had received some emails and regarding, well, I'm going to talk about the finances more than the sale of it, but the finances of the, of the senior center as it relates to some CDs. I know Judy was here at the last meeting too. And so I met with the city attorney just to share with her, in case this becomes more of a discussion about these CDs, where, where, where the city's at in relation to them. I shared with her the 1976, the 1978 agreements between the seniors and the city when that, when that center was put in place. I shared with her the last minutes that we had received from the senior center board. And the one thing that, that, that I'll just share right this, at this point is the city never, ever received any CDs. The city never got anything suggesting that CDs should be used for any specific purpose. So, um, I know there's been some talk about that and it might be coming up too. But I just kind of wanted to, during my report at this point, just share with you guys that, but by the time everything was turned over to us, it was a checking and a savings account with balances in it. That was it. We don't know anything about any CDs. I also met with labor attorney Christina Pasolis regarding our ex-personal pol, uh, well, the personnel policy, but also some discussions about our ex-personnel that we've been dealing with. And then also, um, I mentioned attending the dam removal bid opening. That was West Central Turkeys regarding the 23 rate adjustments. And then the only thing, other thing I wanted to add was, um, an email from councilman Strand. And I know Brian touched on some of the things and we will be talking about some of the things next week, uh, or next meeting. The only other thing on there was kind of to give you guys an update on where Rogers cleanup is at. And, um, all I can, can share with you at this point, from what I know from talking to his probation officer, is that he still hasn't went to court, at a court hearing yet. Apparently that's set for sometime in December. It had been set prior to that, but he seems to be able to just give the court excuses and they kick the can down the road. So he hasn't been through court yet, which means, uh, he might be on probation. But without the court hearing to see how his probation's doing, there's been no action by the courts. If you want to get more detail on where things stand and what the city council feels should be done, then I would suggest that we invite our prosecuting attorney, Jeff Scossing, to the next council meeting to address the council, to share with the council, here's what's happening, here's what's happened, and here's what needs to happen. Because I personally believe, it's my opinion, the courts are, and our, possibly our prosecuting attorney is not being strong enough when it comes to what the city wants to see happen and should happen. So maybe bringing him up here and the city council giving him, here's our expectations and what we think needs to happen because everything we've been trying to this day is not working. Maybe if he hears it right from the council, maybe there'll be a, a little bit stronger, push from the court, to the courts, through our city attorney to get stuff done. That's my report.
Any questions for Don?
I have one. The license bureau, any, any progress or?
Uh, yeah, well, we did hear from the state.
Yeah.
That going through the process of, of notifying and the county to see if they're interested, notifying the city to see if they're interested. We've been through that part. So from what I understand, it was just a matter of they would, once the city sent them response, which we did a month or so ago, then they advertise. And I'm not sure how, if that's a 60-day thing or what it is, I'd have to look again. But they advertise it out there to see if there's anybody interested in opening a DMV in Pelican Rapids. If so, submit an application. Well, they already have an application, but they got to open it up for everybody. So they don't expect that they'll get another one, but they got to do that, do the process. Once that window closes, then they look at the application of the, of the individuals that submitted it from Pelican Rapids and they'll be approved. And then they just find where they want to be. Now, the location obviously had changed because they had to give up the building because they didn't have a business ready to go in it. But that is still a possibility. There's other, there's also two other conversations that I've been involved in with two other property owners that would be very willing to have a conversation with them about putting it in their locations. And all three locations are downtown. So that's good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Item number 18, mayor report. A few things I've done the last couple of weeks since last council meeting. Had a conversation with the mayor of Historic City Hall on October 26th. Local Foods, Local Places Steering Committee met at the library end of October. Attended water and sewer budget meeting and rate meetings with councilman Foster, Don, Danielle here at city hall. November 2nd, we had city admin, future city administrator interviews here at city hall. And, uh, we did have a council meeting then, and that was reconvened on November 3rd, which I attended. Met with council, excuse me, Chamber of Commerce President Joe Floss regarding future of the Chamber of Commerce, their duties, and also the EDA of the City of Pelican Rapids. Attended the work session regarding the sale of Senior Citizens Building. Attended a meeting with In Control, uh, virtually here at city hall with councilman Foster and Administrator Soga. Attended multi-use meeting with, uh, school personnel, county personnel, and city personnel, like three times here within the last month. Attended a meeting on November 7th at the library regarding youth leaders in our community. And they had an organization also attending how we could, how the youth could build bonds here in Pelican Rapids and what the city or community could do as a whole for them. Attended an open house and ribbon cutting ceremony at Community and Life Services Building on North Broadway on November 7th. Attended the dam removal, river restoration, bid openings here at city hall. And yesterday, reviewed the city council agenda for this evening's, uh, meeting with Administrator Soga. And then also, yesterday also attended another multi-use building meeting with Superintendent Ford, Commissioner Johnson, Councilman Foster, Administrator Soga.
Thank you.
Seeing to other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Are you changing your mind?
Starting to wonder.
So good.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
He heard two more meetings, he went, oh!
I did what?